Thank you, Commissioner Sturza.
Um, I can start recording as soon as you're ready.
Yeah, give me five seconds. Trouble digging in. Okay, I am ready, Nellie.
Okay, uh, recording.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Richfield Planning Commission. Tonight is March twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. Uh, staff, would you take roll call?
Sorry about that, we did not, uh, Ranger was gonna do that beforehand. Second here, sorry about that.
It's okay.
Commissioner Quam. Commissioner Keneely.
Here.
Commissioner Sturza.
Here.
Commissioner Holm Big Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Sirma.
Here.
Commissioner Rudolph said that he would not be able to make it. We have a quorum.
Thank you. So, uh, who's missing? Oh, okay. Yeah, I understand. Thank you. All right, so that brings us to, I'm filling in for our new chair. Chair Rudolph is not able to be here, so I'm vice chair filling in just for tonight, so, um, please raise your hand and direct your questions through the chair or vice chair. And I'm still getting to know some of the newer names, so be patient. And then raise your hand, you get called on, and then if you'd say who you are, I'm Commissioner Quam, or whatever. Um, that would be helpful. So first we have approval of tonight's minutes. Do we have a motion in a second? And you do not need to be called on for motions and seconds. Just say your name.
My opponent Johnson, I move to approve the minutes.
All right, second. Okay, Chair Quam, seconds. Any discussion about, uh, approval of tonight's minutes? Hey, uh, staff, would you take roll?
Yes, thank you, I can do this. Uh, Chair Quam.
Aye.
Commissioner, uh, Holm Big Johnson. Commissioner Keneely.
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza.
Aye.
Commissioner Sirma.
Aye.
Guys have it.
Yeah, the motion passes. Um, that brings us to approval of our February twenty eight, twenty twenty two Regular Planning Commission meeting minutes. I, uh, Chair Quam moves that we approve those minutes. Is there a second?
My support Johnson.
All right, any discussion on approving those minutes from February? Staff, would you take roll?
Yes, Chair Quam.
Aye.
Commissioner Holm Big Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Keneely.
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza.
Aye.
Commissioner Sirma.
Aye.
Staff, would you mind just saying if something passed? So I know we're done. Okay, thank you. All right, so, um, next we have open forum and to the public that I'm sure, Jane? No, I think that was an error. Okay. Open forum is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on items not on the agenda. So not the two public hearings tonight, but anything else would be now in, uh, the number to do that if you want to call in. I believe it's on the screen too, but it's six one two, eight six one, zero six five one. And, uh, you would have up to three minutes to share your opinion about anything you think would be of interest to the planning commission. Did we have any caller calls ahead of time or emails, staff, for open forum?
Chair Quam, we did not.
Okay. Um, and do we have any callers waiting to speak at open forum, staff?
Chair Quam, we do not have any callers right now.
Okay, so that we have that every month, just keep it in mind. Um, and we'll move on to approval. Oh, we did that already. Sorry, I did that out of order. Okay, so now we are up to our two public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight. Um, there's a protocol we go through, um, there'll be plenty of time for the public to call in. Uh, it's the same phone number as I just read for open forum, six one two eight six one zero six five one. Our first public hearing will be to consider a request for a site plan approval and a variance for a daycare, takeout restaurant and event space at sixty four thirty six Penn Avenue South. Staff, would you read your report?
Thank you, Chair Quam. South Hill Event Center, the applicant is proposing a new event space, daycare facility and takeout restaurant at sixty, sixty four thirty six Penn Avenue South. This property is zone mixed use community with the Penn Avenue Corridor Overlay District. All three of the proposed uses are permitted in this zoning district, and a site plan review is required in this case because the cha- the use of the property is changing. The proposed event center would have a maximum capacity of one hundred twenty seven people and the hours of operation would not overlap with the daycare or takeout hours. Considering the separate operating hours, the total park, park, off-street parking requirement for the site with a applied transit reduction as well as a bicycle parking reduction is thirty seven spaces. Due to the layout of the existing improvements on the property, only nineteen parking spaces are available onsite, which is about fifty one percent of the total required parking. The applicant would be providing, as I mentioned, act, uh, a bike, for bike parking reduction, which would, um, involve the improvement of more than twenty bicycle parking spaces. And as I mentioned, this site would take advantage, or is eligible to take advantage of a a transit reduction for its, um, proximity to high frequency transit. The applicant is, in light of these circumstances and deficiencies in parking, the applicant is requesting a variance to the minimum number of required parking stalls. Um, the applicant has been working with property owner across the street to secure additional parking through a lease requirement. However, in this case, um, staff would recommend denial of the requested variance based on the fact that the application would not meet all the criteria required for approval of a variance as described in, in further detail in the attachment included with the staff report. Shared parking under the joint use parking rules and the zoning code, um, would allow for, uh, the establishment of these uses, uh, should the applicant find sufficient off-street parking in the vicinity, uh, and that, that, that parking could be secured with a long-term covenant or easement. Staff is recommending approval, therefore, of the site plan with the condition that, that arrangement be obtained prior to securing of building permits. So at this point, I could be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is on the call too and can speak to the application, but the action tonight that we are looking for is a public hearing and then a motion to recommend approval of the site plan with, um, the condition noted that I just noted, as well as a denial of the parking variance. So again, happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Planet Cruzos. Um, so, uh, did the, uh, did the applicant want to say anything right now? You'll have another chance. And introduce yourself if you do. Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Um, thanks for having me. My name is Rashid Omar and, uh, my company name is Modern Realty. Um, we, the, the site, actually, my architect is not on the call he's supposed to be, but I guess, uh, I'm by myself. And, uh, but, um, just wanna let you know that our intent, um, for this site is, uh, what is mentioned. We also under, uh, negotiation on another property, uh, and within, um, the vicinity of this property that we negotiating to purchase. Uh, in the meantime, we also have a, a lease agreement and we siding with, uh, another property that's across the street that's gonna be providing another sixteen parking stalls. Uh, um, the, um, hours of operation are from eleven AM to si- uh, I believe eleven AM to six PM. Uh, and they only use three parking stalls, and we provided a letter from the owner, um, uh, his intentions to, uh, work with us to provide the additional parking. Um, other than that, you know, we we have good intentions to bring, um, uh, I should disclose that I actually grew up sixty four forty one Queens Avenue, apartments behind the building, and after twenty years, I'm back in the same area. And, um, I know the area very well, and, uh, we have good intentions to bring, you know, chops, good paying chops and, uh, you know, re- uh, re- uh, redevelop, uh, this location and hopefully if we get, uh, the next door property, we also plan to develop that one as well.
Thank you, Mr. Omar. Uh, commissioners, do you have any questions for staff right now or for Mr. Omar before we open the public hearing? If you'd raise your hand, I'd, I'd appreciate it. Commissioner Sturza.
Thank you, Chair Quam. Um, I, I'm wondering to see, my understanding is that the city council, and I, um, didn't have a chance to listen to the conversation, so I'm wondering if city staff can help me, um, understand the agreement that came, um, with the uh, Partnership Academy parking situation. If that, um, arrangement with, uh, Partnership Academy, could a similar, um, agreement um, be applicable in this situation, or if city staff could come in on that, I'd appreciate it.
We, uh, generally tried to approach it the same manner in this case. Um, however, there's, there's quite a few distinctions um, that would kind of limit what we can do here. Um, ultimately with partnership, since there was inability to build structure parking, um, that was a, an additional option that's just not available here. There'd be no physical way to, there, they're at nineteen stalls, that's the most they're gonna get, um, just dimensionally. So that kind of eliminates an opportunity that, that partnership had, but, uh, with this case, um, the applicant is able to pursue a similar arrangement. He could purchase, uh, an adjoining property or obtain a, a more long-term lease, so, so it's similar in that manner, um.
It was, I, uh, incorrect in understanding that there was also if, uh, parking couldn't be obtained, a fee could be paid or something of the sort?
Not familiar with that.
Okay, I must have misunderstood. Thank you.
Other questions? Yep.
I'll just, I'll just add maybe, um, potentially maybe what you heard was that sometimes we could hold funds in escrow so that a future improvement could be built. Where again, this, that's not really an option in this case because there's just really no ability to expand, um, without a um, tearing down the building and doing, you know, something like barrage, subterranean parking, um, which would be a, a more significant undertaking. So I think maybe that's where you got a financial, um, implication, so.
Other commissioners? Okay, we'll have a chance for more questions after the public hearing, so to the public that's listening, um, we'll go through some steps. You can call in about this if you like, um, but I will open the public hearing. Uh, let's see. Staff, did we have any, um, advance communication about this open hearing?
We did not. Chair Quam, we, we denied.
Okay, do we have any callers? Thank you. Do we have any callers on the line for this public hearing?
Chair Quam, we do not have any callers right now.
All right, so no advance communication, no callers on the line. We'll just wait a minute and then I'll close, we'll close the public hearing. Whenever, uh, commissioner feels like we've had enough time, you can make a motion to close the public hearing. Six one two eight six one zero six five one. This is Chair Quam. I'll move that we close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Sturza also moved.
Thank you. Any discussion about closing the public hearing? Director Pelman, will you take rule?
Yes, Chair Quam.
Aye.
Commissioner Holm Big Johnson. Commissioner Keneely.
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza.
Aye.
Commissioner Sirma.
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, so now, uh, we have discussion or questions from commissioners, um, did the applicant want to add anything more? And then we'll ask you to back out of the discussion except for questions. Is there anything else last minute things you wanted to put out there, Mr. Omar?
So the variance, um, yeah, how, is that the part of the application, the variance or not in this discussion?
Yes.
Okay, we would like to ask for if we can get the variance, even although we providing the parking spaces, uh, that we discussed. Can we get our approval for, uh, variance for the additional parking?
Okay, uh, this is Chair Quam. That's what we will, uh, discuss now. That's a good clear question, so we'll discuss if those variance criteria were met. Um, so, um, we have to meet all of them in order to approve it. So that's our legal responsibility apparently, or quasi-legal. Um, so we'll discuss if that staff, um, didn't think it was met, so now it's time for commissioners to ask questions or discuss if they think that was met and also uh, if they want to approve the site plan. So, um, anything else right now, Mr. Omar?
Um, that's about it.
Okay, thank you. So if you could just, just hold back a bit unless you get asked questions, that would be great. Uh, commissioner, commissioners, any, um, or staff, any comments or questions? Commissioner Sturza.
Um, I think it's a really exciting proposal and, um, a good use of the property and would be excited to have, um, the, this in my neighborhood, um, but in terms of meeting the variant standards, I don't think that we can get over the practical difficulty standard that, um, a variance requires. So, um, as much as I hate to see, um, parking get in the way of a great development, I don't think the variance, uh, threshold is met here. Um, I do like the idea of approving the site plan, um, with the agreement or with the, um, requirement that parking be met, um, with an off-site agreement.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Sirma?
Yes, I have a question for staff for clarification. So it, what I read the staff report, is it, is my understanding correct that, uh, the not meeting the parking requirement, um, for the proposed uses of the property is in itself not sufficient to meet the practical difficulties, uh, of a variance that the parking requirement itself does not, does not suffice? Is that correct?
Uh, Chair Quam, commis- uh, planning commissioners, um, if I'm understanding the question correctly, um, just, uh, the fact that there is a, a discrepancy between uh, the use that's requested and the amount that's determined by ordinance that in itself is the hardship that, uh, the variance is seeking relief from, but the fact that, um, yeah, so maybe if you could rephrase your question, but, um, the
I, I can clarify if you'd like. Uh, so since, since the, the, the use being proposed for the property, we have a specific use we propose the property, and the fact that the property itself due to its size cannot physically accommodate the parking minimum, that does not, that does not meet the threshold of practical difficulty just because the site does not possess enough parking within its boundaries, correct?
Correct. And, and what you're describing is basically a self-imposed hardship because of the nature of the uses that are being proposed. That is, um, in imposing a hardship on oneself where if, uh, the owner were to find similar tenants to what's in there now, they could continue on with any non-conformities that are existing, or find a different use that complies, that can meet, uh, the nineteen stall requirement.
Uh, thank you, that answers my question.
Uh, this is Chair Quam, um, what, what options could the applicant have if we approve the site plan and not the variance? What will that look like and what are there other options that do, can you answer that?
So, the, the, as it, as the recommendation is currently written, if the variance were denied, the applicant can pursue the obtaining of additional property or obtain, uh, a long-term covenant or an easement with an adjoining to, property to meet the required minimum and then they'd be able to, to initiate those uses. Um, alternatively, uh, the, the planning commission could potentially, uh, grant a, uh, a reduction of a portion of the required parking stalls, um. I, I don't know offhand what percentage or, uh, a raw number that that would consist of, but that certainly is an option that the the commission could entertain. So, um, yeah, tho- those are basically the two options. Approve as, as is or modify the, the um app uh recommendation.
Thank you.
Or, sorry Chair Quan, and then ultimately you could deny both the site plan and the, the variance. Um but you know, the recommendation is to allow the, the applicant to pursue the uh route of finding, finding an alternative.
Uh this is Chair Quan, um um echoing what Commissioner Sturso said with the variances. I don't see that it meets a practical difficulties test or unique circumstances that only apply to that property um that were caused by outside forces or people. It sounds like a great, you know, um project and proposal, but I, the variances are so strict and I don't see how it, it could meet it. So other commissioners? Commissioner Keneely?
Thank you, Chair. Um I have a few questions a- about the bicycle parking situation here. I, I saw a bullet point in here that um twenty bicycle spots are required for a five percent reduction in the overall uh requirement for parking. But in one of the maps down here for the, the layout, I believe I'm seeing six bicycle rap racks on it. And um I'm, I'm just curious for uh, for the developer possibly, if, if you could talk about what you plan to provide for, for bicycle parking.
I, I can also address that too. If you, if you look at the site plan, there's spots for six up front and then towards the rear, there's another fourteen.
Okay, sorry, I, I missed those. Thank you.
Yeah, that's the twenty.
And one, one thing I'm kind of struggling with, with, with this proposal is that with a daycare and an event center, um as a regular cyclist, I don't see those as a popular um things to do with a bicycle. And this portion of Penn Avenue is also a challenging area for cyclists, especially ones maybe taking kids to a daycare. I'm curious if the, the twenty bicycle spaces are, are really helping people who will use this site? And um if, if they wouldn't be better used as actual car spaces. Uh this goes against quite a bit of what I personally believe in, but I do want to see this site being um used to its full potential. So wanna just put that out there. Thank you.
Other discussion or questions from commissioners? Commissioner Sirma?
I, I have a question for uh staff again. Uh in your report, you mentioned that there are uh parking minimum, a certain parking minimum um reduction that's applied for when the property is uh along a, a transit line as this route is. But in your report, you also mentioned, you say it's on high frequency transit, which it really isn't. Is there a distinction between whether it's on, what, what kind of transit it's on? Or just if it's on transit or not, that that distinction applies?
There is a standard by which um the number of, of blanking on the term right now, but basically the number of buses that go by on a, on a um given timeframe. So this, the site would, that, the service along Penn Avenue would qualify and meet those conditions to be considered to meet that threshold.
Do you know what the threshold is?
Off the top of my head, I'm not recalling it. Believe it is. Look it up.
If I may, um Metro Transit defines it as service every fifteen minutes or better.
Correct. And Pen, on Penn Avenue, it's every thirty minutes and on sixty-sixth street two block, it is every, uh the bus is every thirty minutes, off peak twenty minutes in the peak, neither of which, on neither of these quarters does it meet Metro Transit's definition of high frequency service. So I was just wondering how the city defines the frequency of service for the, to, to credit for these types of situations.
Ryan? You're muted, Ryan. Ryan, you're muted.
Sorry about that. It's a weekday frequency of two uh runs per hour between seven and six thirty. Regular service weekdays after six thirty and some Sunday, Saturday, Sunday and holiday service. So that's how we define um frequently operating is the term. I might have stretched and used um high frequency, but it's frequently op- operating.
So it is a fairly broad definition, okay.
Are you ready for a motion? We can still discuss after the motion and you can amend the motion. Uh this is Chair Quan. I, I um, let's see. I just lost it.
Chair Quan, I can make the motion if you prefer.
Yes.
Commissioner Sturso, um I recommend approval of the proposed site plan and denial of the variance at sixty-four thirty-five Penn Avenue South.
Chair Quan seconds. Is there a discussion on that motion? Okay, staff, would you take rule?
Yes, Chair Quan?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmberg Johnson? Commissioner Keneely?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturso?
Aye.
Commissioner Sirma?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. So can, Mr. Omar can follow up with community development about some of those other potential options?
I have one question. So instead of uh, uh I know the, the city code is to get a, a easement on the cro- uh across the street property, but if we, if we get a lease in place, actual lease, will that be sufficient without getting an easement? Because it's, as we all know that to get a easement, property that we don't own, it's not gonna be easy.
Ryan?
So per code, we require, the code requires a covenant or an easement. Um the point is so that it's, can't be unilaterally revoked or not renewed. So yeah, those, those are what the code allows, allow for.
Well, thank you for coming, Mr. Omar. Hope you do follow up and good luck with your, everything you're doing and we wish you the best.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Alright, good night.
Yeah, thanks.
Alright, so to our next public hearing, which is to co- a public hearing to consider a request for an amended planned unit development, final development plan and conditional use permit to allow a micro brewery and brew pub taproom at six four oh two Lindell Avenue South. Uh s- uh s- so public, you can start calling in and being on, getting ready to be on hold. And staff, would you read your report, please?
Thank you, Chair Quan. Benefactor Brewing has submitted requests for land use approvals for a micro brewery and brew pub slash taproom at sixty-four oh two Lindell Avenue South. The applicant specifically is seeking approval of an amendment to an existing planned unit development, final development plan and a conditional use permit. The proposal consists of a nine thousand two hundred forty-two square foot building containing a production facility with a taproom and a kitchen. An associated off-street parking area and patio area will also be constructed. The applicant proposes to include an existing amphitheater area into the overall use book plan specifically for entertainment for patrons as described in the submitted application materials. This particular site is located in what's been known as the Lakes at Lindell area. Since the late nineteen nineties, the city has identified this area for reinvestment and or redevelopment. The comprehensive plan guides this area as mixed use, the intent of which is to create a vibrant, vibrant, thriving city center that will serve as Richfield's downtown. The city center is to include a mix of residential shopping, recreation and business uses. The entire former Lindell Gardens Center's property, including the subject property, is zone planned mixed use. The approval of that zoning happened in two thousand three to fulfill the vision of the comprehensive plan and specifically the Lakes at Lindell area. A, an active commercial use component has been a part of the overall redevelopment plan, including the two thousand eighteen amendment, which proposed a six thousand square foot commercial building that would coordinate with the already constructed outdoor activity space for the site. The proposed uh plans depict a building with, the proposed plans in that two thousand eighteen plan depicted a building with frontage up to Lindell Avenue. Since the proposal represents a departure from that layout, a uh planned unit development amendment is necessary. In order to address this reduced building frontage, the applicant proposes to maintain street presence by way of a pedestrian connect, connection lined with landscaping from Lindell Avenue to the main, building's main building and the building's main entrance. Additionally, a decorative silo and use of storefront windows attempt to further the pro- proposed building's street level interest. The applicant's request also includes uh deviation from other relatively mining, minor underlying uh code provisions, specifically one regarding hours of operation, which would deviate from the, from the stated uh micro brewery zoning requirements and instead would be that which is allowed for other full-service restaurants or alcohol-serving businesses. It should be noted though that the applicant states that the facility would close at eleven PM or midnight. Potentially, potential impacts from operation of the facility uh in staff's opinion are addressed through proposed conditions of appraisal, approval, specifically limiting the number and duration of outdoor performances. And it should be noted that the city code contains noise standards which stipulate daytime noise and nighttime noise uh level limits. The proposed, uh the proposal in improvements associated maintain the circulation and access points and access to points within and beyond the larger redevelopment site as is stipulated in the previous land use approvals. To fulfill this circulation requirement, a pathway would be provided to the west of the Lake Winds Co-op Building and the proposed building, and the proposed building as well from Lindell Avenue uh to the front, to, and there would be a connection to the uh front of the building with a separate path north of the proposed parking area. In light of public safety staff's concern with uh outdoor alcohol service, the applicant has worked with public safety staff as well as community development staff to address uh how perimeter boundaries can be established while also maintaining the required access and circulation to again points beyond just this uh development site. The applicant will install a barrier along the edge of the amphitheater, the pond edge, and uh explore the use of wristbands or stamps to prevent the sale or passing of alcohol to minors. As I mentioned, a combination of plantings and signage and fencing will clearly mark where alcohol consumption is allowed uh but will also allow for that continued passage uh through the site and through the amphitheater area. This delineate, delineation is necessary as alcohol consumption is prohibited in public parks, which is the land area beyond the limits of the subject properties. However, and I'll just note that it appears that a portion of the amphitheater structure actually encro- encroaches onto the adjoining um city property. So therefore, one of the uh uh recommended conditions of approval is that a lot line adjustment be executed to correct that. Among the information you received, there were a number of correspondences discussing certain covenants that are in place for this property. The applicant has expressed uh that they are hoping that they will be able to amend this agreement. However, it is not agreement that the city enforces or that the city council or planning commission can consider in making land use decisions. Zoning decisions do not negate any private agreements that are in place and state statute dictates a timeline that the city must proceed with on duly submitted zoning applications. Uh and as I kind of wrap up my comments here, I just want to remind folks on the stream that the planning commission is a recommending body to the city council and the city council would weigh in on these specific requests. But at this time, staff has recommend, rec- we find that the project is consistent with the overall development plan and it's the intent and policies of the comprehensive plan and code requirements for mixed use development. And accordingly, staff is recommending approval of the request. So at this time, the action tonight is a public hearing on the three requests and then a vote on a recommendation to the city council. Uh I think during the, when the public hearing is um opened, I have quite a few uh correspondences that I would uh acknowledge that we received. So I think maybe um I'll, I'll go about it in that manner. Uh the applicant has a few representatives on the call here with, who can answer any questions. And of course, staff can stand for any that you have at this time. Thanks.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to say anything at this time? Mr. Nelson?
Thank you, Chair Quan, and thank you, Ryan, for a wonderful summary of our project. Um I, I think many people know, we've been working on this for almost three years now and we're very excited that we're finally taking this step to present to the planning commission and hopefully move forward with our project. Um we are excited to be the first taproom in Richfield. We know there is a lot of community support for our project and general demand for a taproom and uh what we're planning on doing with this site. Just today, someone that we are not in any way affiliated with posted uh some of the information that was in the agenda for today's meeting into the Richfield Community Facebook group and it got over two hundred likes and a hundred twenty comments, almost all of which were positive in the last few hours. So I think that's a testament to just how excited the community is for uh a use like ours in this location and, and in Richfield in general. Um in addition to the fact that we will be a taproom uh producing craft beer and, you know, selling it on site, we are also going to be serving food. And to that end, we're really excited to be bringing uh the chef behind Win sixty-five uh back to Richfield. As you know, Win sixty-five is no longer open, but Ben Reins, who was the creative, you know, behind that restaurant, is one of our partners on this projects and we would expect to have a similar type of food menu uh inside of our taproom to what you would have experienced at Win sixty-five. And it's just basically across the street from where that location was uh before it unfortunately closed. In addition to that, uh our project will create in the neighborhood of fifteen to twenty-five jobs uh in the city of Richfield. We're very excited about that and there's, uh we're required to bring those jobs to the city as part of uh the funding for this project. We believe we're uniquely s- uh suited for this site. As Ryan mentioned, it's been available and undeveloped and vacant for many years at this point. And we think that a, a use like ours is one of the only uses that makes a lot of sense because there's limited uh circulation for vehicles to go through the site um because there's the amphitheater and someone needs to be able to figure out how to use uh that to its, its fullest potential to continue to give the public access to that uh walkway around the lake, et cetera. Um we think it's, it's pretty easy to envision having a beer overlooking the amphitheater in the lake and enjoying uh the nature that's already there. We would like to be a family-friendly project and I'm actually the only member of our team that doesn't have a young family at home, uh but the rest of our, our team does and that's one of the tenants that um we are, we are using as a guiding tenant as we look ahead to what this will be. We want to have a restaurant where kids can come and be welcome and have activities and, you know, play in, in the outdoors while their adults enjoy food and, and a beer. Um one quick point of clarification on Ryan's comments, uh he mentioned that we could be open until midnight. We can't as a taproom be open past eleven PM. Um so that would be the absolute latest we would be open. And we don't think we would actually be open uh to eleven PM most nights, although we, we don't know exactly what our hours will be. It's still pretty early to uh have that finalized. we don't know exactly what our hours will be, it's still pretty early to uh have that finalized. Finally, I just wanted to touch on the reason for our name. We're called Benefactor Brewery because we want to be a benefactor uh giving back to the community. And so as part of that, um we're planning on giving back a portion of every beer that we sell to local charities. Um so that's something that's really core, along with the family-friendly element of what we're doing, that's core to uh this project and who we are as a team. So um with that, I want to thank you all for your time and looking forward to answering any questions.
I'm not sure if you're here for this, but Ms. Simpson, are you here to speak on this?
Uh yes, I'm, I'm one of Sam's partners in the project, but I think Sam did a good job covering it, so I think we can, we can move on, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um so commissioners, any questions before public hearing? Go ahead, Commissioner Holmig Johnson? No, I thought you, I thought you did a, Commissioner Kneely?
Yeah, um, one of the questions I'd, I'd like to get clarity on, both from the city and from the applicant is uh about growlers and crowlers. If, if off-sale is a part of the business plan, how does that affect? I, I guess, we, we all know we have mu- municipal liquor stores here in Richfield. And, and I'm curious how those uses can coexist.
Oh, I can start from the um city's perspective. It's um the zoning code, which is kind of, I think the area that I can speak to most clearly is uh would allow for it, but the number of which um, or the volume of sales is limited, but it's expressly allowed should the um applicant receive a conditional use permit. But um, I'm, I, I think they can speak to whether that was included in their, in their plan.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Uh we are planning on selling growlers and crowlers. Um to Ryan's point, the volume that I think is allowed per the zoning is way, way more than what we would ever expect to sell uh off-sale. So I, I don't think we're planning on doing anything out of the ordinary for other taprooms in the Twin Cities. Um a- and I don't, I don't expect it to be a major portion of our sales. We're we're focused on bringing people into our space and serving them food and, oh, and the beer as well.
Thank you both for the clarity. Thank you.
This is Chair Kwam. I had a question about um what Ryan, what you said about microbreweries closing and that this one could close later and then compared to what Sam Nelson said, could that be clarified?
Sure. So the way, when this, I'll start by saying this is obviously the first uh microbrewery that's been proposed. Um so this section of the zone code is yet to be tested and the way that um the hours of operation is stipulated is it references um basically off-site sales. Uh restrictions that are set by state code. Um and just judging by the intent of that, um it, it appears that it likely was meant that that would govern when growlers and crowlers could be sold, but not so much the operation because um, you know, a full-service restaurant can be open till two A M. So in this case, um the, the deviation would be just that the, they have the ability to operate under those what's allowed for basically full-service restaurants.
So is that eleven or twelve?
Um, well, they are self-imposing eleven, um but um the alcohol licensing would allow a full-service restaurant to be open till two A M. Again, they're, they're indicating that they would close sooner than that and would be by eleven. And potentially in most days, it sounded like even before then.
And, and so that's, that's a concern for me. Uh Mister Nelson, I know that you're, I know you said you're not going to be, but um somebody in eight years might want to be or whatever. Mister Nelson?
It, yeah, our, our understanding is um that's not the law in place. I, I believe there's a statewide restriction on taprooms, whether they serve food or not. Um I don't know of any that are open past eleven P M, so I, I think we should clarify that and um if, if that's not the law, um we would be happy to come to some sort of agreement with the city that we won't be open till two A M. We have no intention of being a bar or anything like that.
Commissioner Kneely, and then Commissioner Serma.
Thank you Chair. Um just an additional question about hours for the site. Some of the public comments have expressed concern over noise and things like that. And so I'm curious if the patio hours and musical performances will mirror the, the taproom's operational hours of eleven P M or will patio hours and music end earlier? Has that been discussed at all?
Uh it has been discussed. We have been um trying to come with a come up with a plan to address some of the noise concerns with the neighbors and immediate adjacency to our site. And um we have not received much in the way of responses from them to our suggested resolutions. So we're open to coming up with some sort of solution whereby we limit either music playing on the patio, whereby we limit um the amphitheaters use. I, I will note the amphitheater doesn't have uh lights for after-dark activities, and that's not part of our, our plan to do that. Um we would expect the amphitheater use to be largely similar to what happens there today, where there's, you know, a, a concert around, you know, five or six P M every now and again, or there's some sort of event during the daytime. Um but we're not, we're not planning on having concerts late at night or anything like that with the amphitheater itself.
Oh, Commissioner Serma, were you, did you have your turn?
Oh, I, I had a, had a question actually about the amphitheater. I'm fairly due to the commission, uh could either the city staff explain a little bit of the history of the amphitheater? How it was developed, the ownership situation, what the proposed ownership situation would be under this plan?
So Melissa um might want to chime in on a little bit more of the history, but uh the new ownership uh when benefactor closed, they would obtain the uh amphitheater area. So how that, how those came about, um generally, those were developed um before the two thousand eighteen um that condominium and apartment uh proposals. Um but uh yeah, Melissa has a lot more of the backstory on that.
Thanks Ryan. Commissioners, yes, um so this entire site has been master-planned. Um originally, when they came in, uh when the, the developers came in. Um it was for a proposal for Lakewins on the south half and then uh combination of retail restaurant housing on the north half. Um Lakewins was built and then the rest of the development stalled. In the meantime, the developer proposed to build the amphitheater and the quasi-public um instruments and artwork that's out there now. So that was constructed. Um the housing development that, uh there had also been a large farmer's market presence originally um proposed for up on Lindell Avenue. When that didn't work out, a revised housing proposal came in that included the thirty uh condominiums and the sixty-six apartments and eight townhomes. So that's the order of things. It was kind of developed um south to north with this wedge piece in the middle um as the last component.
Commissioners, any more questions before we open the public hearing? Commissioner Kneely?
Thank you Chair. Um I want to apologize to staff if, if this information is in the packet. But I couldn't find a requirement for parking. Is that because the operator isn't asking for variance? There's the, the fifty-six stalls proposed meets all the requirements?
Correct, uh the number of stalls meet the requirements and generally it's um ten per thousand square foot of the kitchen and uh taproom area and then uh one per thousand of the production area and they, they comply with the minimum.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Holmig Johnson?
I'm just, is it appropriate to ask a question um about all information in the packet right now? Um so I wonder in some of those submissions from the um attorney about the um Government Data Practices Act requests, and there was a lot of mention about um of the timing of, of the pla- of the condo development versus the planned uses. And I'm just wondering if city staff could comment on that because that seems very complicated and I'm not quite sure that what, but the thing that was trained, that they were trying to make.
I'm sorry, I had a little bit of difficulty hearing you. Um but it sounded like you wanted us to respond to information in, in a letter that we received regarding sort of the timing of um when the, the, when the, I, I'm sorry, I kind of.
Oh sure, no, I'm, in the um, uh in the packet uh of comments, there was a from an, from an attorney representing one of the owners and the condos. And we were talking about Government Data Practices Act uh requests and how they thought things were going on um. But, I mean, in fact, I was really confused by the point that they were trying to make. And then there was a reference in the packets submissions that we got today, where they talked about emails with city staff and Government Data Practices Act. And the timing of some of this development stuff and what they were led to believe versus what was actually built.
Melissa, you're nodding it, um.
I think I was following. Commissioner Holmig Johnson, let, let me know if I don't answer what you're asking. I think you're asking about, um there, there were some comments from the public about the possibility that they were led to believe that this would be developed differently than it was. And there was an allegation that there were discussions with staff um that prove that. Is, is this correct? Okay, so in answer to that, yes, there was a data practices request. Staff turned over all um emails and correspondence related to this proposal. Um the issue here is that perhaps the developer explained what might happen here in the future to prospective owners in a way that differed from what is being proposed now. The city has no information about the discussions that were had with individual owners. What the planning commission and city council are asked to consider is whether or not the land use meets your code requirements. We cannot uh make a decision, we're not privy to those discussions and to be honest, I, you know, regardless of what was said to the homeowners, your responsibility here is to evaluate the proposal based on our requirements.
Oh, oh, yeah, no, I understand. I, I just, so the issue is what, not what the city was telling people, but what the developer may or may not have been telling people. That has nothing to do with the master plan or what the city has planned or thought about this site. That's an entirely separate issue. And the city wasn't in on those conversations. That was the, the developer talking to the sellers allegedly.
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Sturza, and then I'd like to ask a question.
Yeah, I was gonna wait until after a public comment for this, but it um kind of parallels this conversation. Um in that same letter, they talked about the reciprocal easement agreement, and that's been brought up in public comment as well. I wonder if city staff could give um the commission recommendations on whether we ought to consider that in our deliberations, whether we have to set it aside, what role that agreement, that private agreement plays in our conversation and our decisions.
Uh so again, um that is not an agreement that the city was party to. We don't enforce it. Um so it, it's not to be taken as part of the land use application considerations. Um that being said, uh anything that they are restricted to in private agreements um where you, you can't grant them something that uh they're not allowed to do via those private agreements. So um in, in this case, they are not to be a part of the decision-making factors here.
Thank you.
This is uh Chair Kwam, and this is a little fuzzy for me. I tried to find um when Cornerstone, I, I was new on the commission when Cornerstone came and told us about the site plan for the condominiums and the design, and they wanted a setback. I don't know what, what it was called at the time, but like a variation from getting closer to the lake for, for different reasons and the discussion did include, you know, how the amphitheater would look and kind of the feel of that area. So it almost implies that we as the city people are part of that, you know? I could see where the public would be confused because that's how it was told. I don't remember the exact wording, um but that's, it was pre- presented as this kind of quiet, gonna be a, a amphitheater and why was that even told to us if it's not part of our, our purview? Because it's kind of misleading then to think the city has no, no point in that, it shouldn't even have brought, been brought up if it's irrelevant, in my opinion. Any, any idea of how to answer that, Melissa? Do you have any thoughts on that?
I'm sorry, Chair Kwam. I, I don't understand the question. Could you, could you rephrase for me?
When Cornerstone came before the planning commission to talk, to ask for um I, I think it was a variance for the water line, you know, and told us about their project. Um you know, thirty units and all this and, and talked about how the amphitheater was going to be a place for I thought, I couldn't find that exact video, but I thought she said it was gonna be a place for the public to go. So it, it kind of made it seem like that was part of the whole project. Um and that we were voting on, does this all sound good? So it's, it's a bit, you know, amorphous to then say we're just divorced from the, I, I got thrown by that, like that we have. Why was that even thrown into the picture? So.
Chair Kwam, I, I think, I think I understand the question. Um and this, the city did approve a master plan that included housing and an amphitheater and a- all, all of these components. The city didn't approve that um reciprocal easement agreement that is between those individual parcel owners that says you can drive over my parcel to get here, you can walk over my, we, we are not a party to those. And those agreements have things in there that say um, you know, you've got copies of it. You, you can't have undue noise and, and things like that. So the city is not party to that. The city did approve housing and did approve an amphitheater next to it, actually in the opposite order. But the city approved an outdoor amphitheater that would be open to the public. We have worked with this applicant. We've said this needs to continue to provide access and be open to the public. That was one of the things that we were told at those meetings. And we will expect you to uh maintain that. And then they approved the housing next to it.
Yes, that helps a lot. Um so they couldn't have private amphitheater events benefactor?
You know, we haven't discussed whether or not they could close it off for an individual evening. We have discussed that in general, people need to be able to walk through here. People need to be able to access the amphitheater. Um we've discussed ma- making sure that there aren't hard barriers that are gonna prevent people from the residential side moving through to get to the public spaces, whether that be um a amphitheater space or park space on the other side or to the co-op.
Okay, thanks very much. It, that helped a lot. Um, okay, should we open the public hearing? All right, open the public hearing? Um so those of you that are waiting to call in at six one two eight six one zero six five one. Um the person that answers your call will give you some instructions. One of the main ones is to mute whatever device you're watching this on, otherwise there are all kinds of noise and we won't be able to hear you. So did we have, I know we had, um Ryan, you were gonna incorporate maybe some of the, the letters that we received. that we received ahead of time into this portion? Did you wanna do that now or?
So um it's up to you, I can do it now. I what I was planning on doing was reading a list of everybody that um wrote in and generally whether they're um they wrote in support or opposition and then I'll try uh to just summarize some of the the points uh of both respective parties. Um, so with that, we can, I can do that now while people are calling in, um maybe that's appropriate, so.
Yeah.
Um, I'll start with those that were um i- in support. Um, and uh the planning commission, you were all forwarded these with the exception of one that I'll call out first. Uh, I received a a an email of support from Nick Daniels and then the rest of these thirty-six names um were all in support and you all received these. Um, and I'm sorry for those watching if I butcher some names here. Um, but uh so again, uh Rob Skezton, Sean Gilbertson, Kathy Warmack, Richard and Kelly Robbins, Anna Maloney, Louise Black, Billick, uh Jerome Bergquist, Chris uh Gasek, Neil Carlin Shower, Wendy Johnston, Angela Nelson, Christopher Woodward, Matt Hoffman, Catherine Perazzo, Brian Sandin, Peter Tressel, Blair Harmon, Reed Osell, Connor Maloney, Lindsay Gish, Cole Hui, Sheila Holtberg, Holly Boyce, Laura Babcock, Kate Clarity, Megan Brelkelt, Drell Kelb, uh again, sorry, Ryan Lear, Katie and Wes Dunzner, Doesner, Dunzner, um Christopher Goyette, Troy Clarity, Megan Olson, Stephen Warmack, Kelsey Nagle, Aaron Riken, Kelly LaPointe. And then we received a text from a six one two number. Um, so those folks were generally expressed their support uh for the for the use. And then uh the following uh individuals uh express uh letters of opposition. Uh, the first one being uh a letter from attorney Mark Thieroff representing uh Julie Harper Wile and Rick Wiley. Uh, David Dornnecker and Judy Spencer, Scott Taylor, Anne and Doug Suich, Anthony and Diane Mills, Peter and Linda Hilger, Margaret Jensen, Toby and Katie Bolick, Connie Carleen, Keith Jensen, Deborah Perry, Margaret Shimon, Jeffrey Prager, Ellen Murphy and Karen Wantock. And the general themes or um through lines that were uh expressed in these letters were uh concerns about lighting, noise, parking, compatibility with uh the Lindale Gardens redevelopment and the adjoining residence residences and um a few on the use of a forgivable loan. Um, so yeah, those were the messages that we received.
All right, thank you. Um, so that was part of our public hearing, so um did we have, is there any other emails or anything from the staff received ahead of time that you wanted to share or is that it?
Those were all of them.
Okay, I didn't know if there were different categories. All right, so if you are wanting to call in, now is your time. We'd love to hear from you. You have up to five minutes. You don't have to take all that time. Um, and uh so staff who is operating the phone lines, do we have any callers on hold?
Chair Kwam, we do and I will transfer them in momentarily.
Thank you. Are you there caller?
Yes.
Hi, welcome. Uh, would you start with your name and address and uh then I will remind you if you reach about four and a half minutes that you have thirty seconds left. Why don't you go ahead?
Okay. Hello, my name is Mary Gorman. I reside at sixty-three fifty Lindale Avenue South in Richfield in uh condo number E one oh four, which will be the closest condo to the Benefactor Brewery establishment. Having reviewed the narrative and the architectural planning documents, Benefactor Brewery has submitted to the planning commission. I note that there is only passing mention of the multiple condo owners. Their graphic location does not show up on the drawings while streets to the north are located. I'm sure though that you and the Benefactor Brewery are aware now of these thirty-plus homeowners. But by not having the condos graphically represented on the plans, it may be hard for you commissioners to realize the environmental impact that the operational choices Benefactor Brewery and the c- planning commission staff has on this neighborhood. My balcony is the tip of the spear, so to speak, or the neighborhood for the neighborhood experiences, the noise, the late night activity, the lights and the amphitheater shows. The planning commission's um staff notes this endeavor is a departure from the proposed P U D and trips over itself in making recommendations and accommodation for the Richfield downtown, stating it fits into the neighborhood with no undue impact on public safety, health or welfare. That light and noise will not spill over to adjacent properties. Sure, it fits in the neighborhood if the neighborhood never shows up on the planning documents for you to see. The city of Richfield's quest to enhance the tax base in this location by encouraging and partnering with the developer to build expensive homes is being sliced by the decreasing property values and diminishing the homeowner's use of their balconies and properties. I urge you commissioners to recognize our loss of balcony privacy, late night peace and quiet and exposure to light pollution at the Richfield Lake and to not expand hours of operation, frequency of amphitheater programming and relax other good neighbor ordinances. Thank you for this consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Gorman. Are we are ready for another caller?
Frequency of amphitheater programming and relax other good neighbor ordinances. Thank you for this consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Gorman. Are we are ready for another caller? Is there a caller?
Oh, hello?
Yes, is this the the second caller?
Oh, yes, I'm the, I must be the second caller.
Okay, okay, um, thank you. Um, so could you start with your name and your address? And I'll, I will give you a heads up if you're at four and a half minutes. I'm sorry, we we often have some technical. Is your device turned off?
I must be the second caller.
Well, I muted my laptop, so.
Um, so could you start with your name and your address and I'll, I will give you a.
Okay, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Patty Smith. I live in the condo adjacent uh to the proposed uh brew pub. My address is six three six zero Lindale Avenue South, unit one zero eight. Okay, can you hear that?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, first, I want to thank the planning commission for letting us voice our concerns. And I'm, this is my first um public meeting I've ever attended, so I'm very impressed with the knowledge that you have of the city, so thank you for that. Um, I would like to give a brief background on myself. I lived in Bloomington for fifty-two years. In the early eighties, when my kids were three and five years old, we visited the Woodlake Nature Center in Richfield every weekend. My kids loved going there. It was a place of serenity and connected us to the Richfield community. When I decided to retire two years ago, I chose this condo on Richfield Lake because of my fond memories of with my kids and our enjoyment of the area. And now my grandkids come up to walk around the lake and the nature, the nature um center as well. So I do have some concerns with the brew pubs outdoor eating area, the gaming, the gaming area that they're planning and the bar top tables and the numerous concerts that they plan on having at the amphitheater. Um, the constant, constant noise generated day in and day out all summer long will have a negative effect on me as a homeowner as I sit on my deck. And the noise will also have an effect on me as my health conditions as well as the community. Um, some may think it isn't a big deal, but I ask to put yourselves in my shoes. Would you want this in your backyard? Um, because of the negative noise effects, I disapprove of the brew pub at this site. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you so much for your, for sharing with us. You ready for the next caller? If callers would hang up when they are finished.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Callers would hang up when they are finished.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can. Um, could you just hold one moment? Um, I don't know if staff has any suggestion about how to avoid that echo what we're getting before we proceed, no? Okay, all right, well, it was worth a try. Um, so sir, please state your name, your address and share your opinions with us and we're glad you're here.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, um, um, the planning commission, I appreciate the effort you're taking to uh consider us. Can you hear, can you hear?
I sure can, I ju- we just need your, your name and address if you would.
Okay, my name is Jeffrey Prager and I live at sixty-three fifty-four Lindale Avenue, which is um the west building of this two-building complex uh a a little further away from the proposed brewery. Um, the thrust of my comments um uh are uh that I want the planning commission to be uh aware that promises kept pro- promises made have not always been promises kept. And this is no less true of what we have been hearing from Benefactors Brewery. The promises made to you and and in general do not reflect their actions with us as a community uh or any kind of concessions to our concerns about noise. So this is a cautionary tale that an approval by you will very likely be the end of the, end of the road. Um, they will, that it it appears that the promises they make about concern about noise abatement, lighting, et cetera, will be made on it up for your benefit but won't in fact be implemented. That has been my experience throughout this whole ordeal. Let me give you three examples. I purchased in this uh community because I understood it was a mixed-use community. It consisted of uh condominiums and townhouses and apartments um and commer- commercial development. The idea that it was going to promote socioeconomic diversity, that it was going to uh promote a kind of environment that would promote community involvement, especially revolving around the amphitheater. It is my understanding that the city provided a substantial sub- subsidy to the uh developer for the development of the amphitheater. Um, that uh was a concrete expression to, in my mind, of the commitment of the city to continue developing this pro- this uh area um consistent with these pr- these v- very principles. The developer has now, before we even signed our um our uh before we took ownership, the developer had already uh arranged with benefactors to sell the entire property, including the amphitheater, which meant in in fact that the subsidy provided by the city to the developer will be now pocketed by the developer on behalf of the sale of the property to benefactors. That was a promise, a promise made that was not kept. Similarly, once Benefactors Brewery made it be known that they were uh in the process of developing this property for a brewery, they uh notified uh residents that they wanted to be good neighbors. And they wanted to be good neighbors and they wanted to speak to the issues that were of concern. There was a meeting with that group, with the benefactors, I presume with their lawyer as well, in which uh the residents expressed their concerns about noise, smell, lighting, landscaping, access. And the very next day, benefactors submitted their proposal without taking to the city, without taking into account any of the discussion that proceeded. It was an act of complete duplicity. And similarly, to each of our our requests for for communication, negotiation, Benefactors has stonewalled and has not met with us until the very last moment prior to the um um the deadline necessary. So as much as I appreciate.
Excuse me, I have to just uh give you a heads up that you're about at your time, if you could wrap up kinda quickly, thank you.
Okay, so as much, as much as I appreciate the promises made, it's our experience through this whole process that they are not to be kept and I urge the planning commission to be aware of that, that they can listen to the promises made and think that they are acting in a responsible manner. Um, but in fact, um it it's uh of uh it's unlikely that the the understanding that the planning commission has will be implemented. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we are going to continue with our callers, we can answer the call. Mr. Nelson, we're just gonna continue with the callers for now. Thank you. Is there another caller? Thank you. Uh, we are going to continue with our callers, we can answer the call. Mr. Nelson, we're just gonna continue with the callers for now. Thank you. Is there another caller?
Yes.
Hi, welcome. If you would start by telling us your name and address and then you have up to five minutes and I will cut in. and then you have up to five minutes, and I will cut in at about four and a half minutes to remind you. Go ahead.
My name is Yvonne Ho. My address is sixty-three sixty Lindale Avenue South. Also, the condos that is called Lakeside at Lindale Garden. My husband John and I own one of the thirty units. And so, as you know from our neighbors, our property is adjoints to the proposed site. I just want, you know, what my neighbors have said, I'm in total agreement with them. But also, I want to just let you know, we love, John and I-
If you would start by telling us your name and address, and then you have up to five minutes, and I will cut in at about four and a half minutes to remind you.
Oh.
Is your device muted? Ms. Ho?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, just a moment.
Yeah, okay. And so, as you know from our neighbors, our property is adjoints to the proposed site. I just want, you know, what my neighbors have said, I'm in total agreement with them. But also, I want to just let you know, we love, John and I-
Is your device muted?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Okay, Ms. Ho, that won't count as part of your time. I'm not sure why we're having so much of this technical- Melissa?
Chairwoman, there's a slight delay between what is happening and as it is on television. And so, if folks will mute their televisions, we can hear them live. It's just replayed about thirty seconds later. So everybody has to mute their devices, or this will keep happening.
Okay, I think I have muted my device, but I'm, okay, so I don't know- Yes, it is.
Okay, Ms. Ho, that won't count as part of your time. I'm not sure why we're having so much-
Chairwoman, there's a slight delay between what is happening and as it is on television.
Okay, go ahead and continue, as long as you're muted on your home device, Ms. Ho.
Okay, I just want to say, we love living in Richfield, and we welcome a vibrant downtown. However, the plan that Benefactor Brewery has is very intrusive, it's huge, and it will impact the quality of our lives negatively. I just want to share with you that, for example, I take advantage of the trails around Richfield Lake all the time. And on warm evenings, I always sit on the steps of the amphitheater to enjoy the sunset and also to enjoy the wildlife. There are other people that will be there, just like I do, and to enjoy what we have. And this plan will change all that. And so I really hope the Planning Commission will not recommend it to move forward. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, and sorry about the interruptions.
That's all right.
Okay, good night.
Good night.
Ready for another caller?
Hello?
Hi, caller. Just reminding you to mute your television or computer or device, and then go ahead and tell us-
I have.
Great, your name and address, and then go ahead and share with us. And I'll remind you if you're approaching five minutes.
Okay. I'm John Cushing. I'm a resident at Lakeside at Lindale Gardens. In two thousand twenty, my wife and I moved from Prospect Park in Minneapolis to our condo on the shores of Lake Richfield. We were excited to move out of the central city to a beautiful, more nature-focused setting in Richfield. We were particularly attracted by being on a lake with its wildlife, viewing opportunities, walkways for exercise, peaceful atmosphere, and the existence of an amphitheater for performances. Last summer, we enjoyed all these benefits, the diversity and enthusiasm events at the amphitheater, from Zumba classes to practicing a jazz band, to scheduled performances coordinated by Illusion Theater, for, which included students that produced a production of The Wiz, and the community in general enjoying the beauty of the lake in all its seasons. We also enjoyed the profusion of wildlife and the opportunity to work, walk the trails as a part of our new community. Our concern with Benefactor Brewer Brewery Pub proposal is its restricted impact on future use of the amphitheater from the public access to the southeast side of the lake. As Richfield noted in its annual report for last year, the area around Lake Richfield has been designated to integrate, designed to integrate the once-hidden Richfield Lake with walking trails, bridges, plus a beautiful outdoor amphitheater which hosts programs for the community. We have had several discussions on the details of this project, the parking, the noise, the lighting hours, and access to the amphitheater. Without much response, I hope with any discussions or decisions by the Planning Committee, that the qualities I and other community members have enjoyed will not be compromised. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Cushing. Ready for another caller? Mr. Cushing?
Yes.
You're still on the line, if you wouldn't mind hanging up.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Okay.
Hi, caller. Just a reminder to be sure to mute your, whatever you were watching us on, so we don't get feedback. And then go ahead with your name and address and share your opinion.
Sounds good. Thank you. We're Jody Spencer and David Dornacker. We reside at Lakeside at Lindale Gardens condominiums at sixty-three fifty Lindale Avenue South. Are you able to hear us?
Yes, we are.
All right, thank you. We wanted to thank the Commission for allowing us to address you this evening. We moved from a home on two and a half acres in Prior Lake to Richfield. When we came upon Cornerstone Development, we found what we thought had the solitude that we were used to with the access and amenities of the city. We fell in love with Richfield and its location. Sitting on our deck and watching the wildlife that occupies Lake Richfield and the access to the trails were significant selling points. We were certainly skeptical of having an amphitheater below our deck before we purchased the property. However, when we asked the developer specifically about this, we were told that it was Colleen Carey's gift to the city of Richfield. It was designed as a community gathering spot with around eight cultural events planned each summer, all ending around eight P M. This was the case the summer prior to COVID, and many of us attended and enjoyed these events. Why would we doubt what we were told, since the city of Richfield even advertised the amphitheater in their promotional marketing materials? The new proposal is for an active bar scene with music playing into the late evening hours. It has been suggested there may be as many as three planned outdoor concerts per week. How are we to enjoy sitting on our deck when watching any remaining wildlife with a late-night party going on below seven days a week? We are in the building closest to the proposed brewpub. We are terrified that we won't be able to enjoy our deck or even sleep at night. We will be forced to consider selling and leaving Richfield if this comes to fruition. And we are fearful that this may be a reality. The loss of the peace and quiet and community promoted by the developer will certainly be gone. We are certain we'll be coming home to our condo parking lot filled with customers from the brewpub because the proposed parking is inadequate. We know there will be a constant flow of people through our property at all hours, returning to overflow street parking, many of them no doubt will be intoxicated to some degree. Brewpubs are typically located in industrial or warehouse districts, not in the backyard of a residential area. We do not know of any other metro brewpub located in a residential area where around a hundred-plus families are negatively affected. The property around our home is densely populated, and it lacks green space. Wouldn't a better option be for those lots, some sort of park setting, a place for people to gather and children to play versus seeing them playing in parking lots as they do today? There's also a large retirement population in the high-rise building near the amphitheater. These people value the amphitheater space to sit and converse and read and watch the wildlife like so many of the residents, young and old. It would be a shame to take this away. One would certainly think that if the city can give away half a million dollars of our tax revenue to fund a private for-profit business, they could find the funds to create much-needed green space where the amphitheater is located. Please, before you cast your vote this evening, please ask yourself, would you like to come home and find cars illegally parked in your driveway? Would you enjoy the constant sound of music and a party of revelers yelling and laughing? The odors of a brewpub and restaurant floating through your open windows? The sounds of delivery trucks and garbage trucks? Intoxicated people trespassing on your property? Please, supporting this development will have such an adverse effect on hundreds of residents nearby. Please cast your vote to oppose this development tonight. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your volunteer efforts to make Richfield a great place to live.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Did your partner want to speak, or are you signing off?
I'm speaking for both of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller?
Yes, hello, Commissioners.
Hello.
My name is Scott Taylor. Hello.
Make sure your device is muted.
My name is Scott Taylor.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Scott Taylor. My family and I reside at six-three-five-four Lindale Avenue South, immediately adjacent to the proposed outdoor food and entertainment complex. We moved to Richfield less than two years ago, choosing to live here over other communities primarily because of the unique mixed-use site, combining a beautiful lakeside location and a community amphitheater with walkable access to a grocery store and other amenities. There's nothing else like it in the Twin Cities, and we looked everywhere. We knew that a strip mall-type restaurant, like the former Lynn sixty-five, or a coffee shop or other suitable business might be developed in the vacant lot next to the community amphitheater.
Excuse me? Excuse me, I have to cut in. Are you muted at home on your computer or television? Because we're getting some feedback.
I am. I have no computer or television on.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, we're having a little more of that tonight, so I'm not sure. Just, I'm sorry for the interruption. Please continue, and I'll add that to your time.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure if you were able to hear my comments, but I was saying we knew that a strip mall restaurant, like the former Lynn sixty-five, or a coffee shop or other suitable small business might be developed in the vacant lot next to the community amphitheater. We never dreamed that the amphitheater would be sold as a package to build a private, large-scale, outdoor brewery and entertainment complex, something that you would only expect to find in an industrial area. The unreasonable negative impacts of sounds, vibrations, lights, and smells just feed from our home on a daily basis would essentially shatter the character of the community we were originally attracted to. Inside our home today, we can easily hear the sound of geese and occasionally the voices of people simply enjoying a stroll around Richfield Lake. Imagine instead a perpetual dining room, game center, and amplified music every single evening, late into the evening. I can say with all sincerity, as much as we do love Richfield, had we known that a development of this type and scale, so incompatible with residential neighbors, was even possible on that site, we never would have purchased our home here. It's such a disappointment, and it's almost like a bad dream, except it's not a dream. Considering the undue adverse impacts, I urge the Commission to reject the current application. There are much higher and better uses for this property that would align with the mixed-use character of the neighborhood. Thank you. I appreciate your time and consideration. I'm sorry for the feedback. I hope you heard my comments.
Thank you. I think we heard them all, so thanks for your input.
Hello?
Hi, caller. If you could, could you mute your device if you're watching our meeting? And then start with your name and address, and go ahead.
The device is muted.
All right. Go ahead.
Okay. This is Dan Miles. We live at sixty-three fifty Lindale Avenue. I'm going to echo many of the comments that have been made by our neighbors. We have lived on a lake before, and we were extremely happy to find this facility, this area again. And that's one of the main reasons we purchased. To let you know some statistics. We are twenty-seven feet from our unit to the benefactor property. We are ninety feet, that is thirty yards, from the amphitheater. We are a hundred and twenty feet from the dining. Jody previously mentioned it's unusual for a brewery, a brewpub, to be this close to a residential area. So we are concerned with many of the things you've heard before, the noise, bright lights in the dining area, and the smells that we anticipate will be coming from this facility. Check on some of the things that Jeff mentioned previously with regard to conversations with Benefactor. I was part of those conversations and left with the understanding that they were going to provide us some real information about the noise levels, how they were controlling. They should have the ability to talk to an acoustician about what can be done to reduce the impact on our lives. The bright lights. The building itself has a number of lights all across it that is shedding light out on their outdoor dining area. They have string lights, that is, they're going to run cables out over these dining areas as well. That's pretty bright. How much of an impact is that going to have on us? Their hours of operation, even tonight, I'm hearing vague references to their hours of operation, whether it's gonna be to ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, two o'clock. Um, it's just, we haven't got any, anything finite. I happen to be a, the type of person that goes to bed between nine and ten at night because I get up at five in the morning. You know, what kind of impact does this have on our ability to have a good quality of life? If we had gotten some answers from benefactor in previous conversations or after those conversations, maybe this would be more palatable. I just don't feel that benefactor has, in good faith, provided us with any of the information or the city with any information that would make their proposal more palatable to our community of thirty units. Um, again, we are very close. I gave you some of the statistics, only, only nine yards away from their property. The, you know, a sprinter in high school is gonna cover this nine yards in what, second, two seconds? Uh, football players, if you're sitting in a, in a high school football game in the bleachers and you're looking out, thirty yards, that's, that's about how far it is to the field. Can you hear the noise on a football field with high school games? The noise level I expect to be about the same. This is particularly close. Um, obviously, I'm against this uh, proposal, it hasn't been thought out. Um, the smells just from brewing beer, um, the waste from brewing beer, the trash, all that goes with that, um, the bright lights and the noise as I said before. Um, I'd just like to see some better definition of what they intend to do that is more palatable for our life. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. We have another caller? Hi caller?
Yes?
Hi, we're glad you're here, um, could you make sure, could you make sure your device is muted that you're watching us on? And then go ahead with your name.
Yeah, I'm not watching, I'm in a back room, so, okay.
And then go ahead with your address.
Okay, this is Tony Mills, uh, Lakeside at Lindell Gardens, sixty-three sixty Lindale Avenue South, Unit W two oh seven. Um, good evening Commissioners and staff. Um, my wife and I um, lived in uh, South Minneapolis, uh, in, in the same home for forty-four years and when we saw the sign that condos were being built on the old Lindell Gardens site, we were pretty excited because you know, this is, this was the garden center that we used for many years before it closed and. So, uh, we made an appointment in March of two thousand nineteen, uh, and met on, at the onsite sales office and actually signed a purchase agreement the same day. Uh, we were happy when we finally closed uh, in July of uh, two thousand twenty and we moved into our new home that same afternoon. Uh, our first night here, we, we bought camp chairs out to our balcony and opened a bottle of wine and to toast our new lives. Um, um, we could not believe how beautiful the new setting was, you know, with the uh, the lake and the amazing wildlife uh, all around. So, uh, weather permitting, we sit out on our balcony and have meals every day, so we are deeply concerned that the evenings will now become intolerable. And I, I'm serious about that because uh, you know, I know what's gonna happen. Anyway, with the brewery, we will see and hear everything throughout the entire evening. Um, now we hear, uh, or last summer we heard the events in the amphitheater and uh, we would often walk down and join in with the festivities, uh, but once the sun set, uh, the events ended and we all went home. Um, we have been to several breweries, uh, none of them were in such close proximity to people's homes, um, as this brew- brewery will be. Um, the brewery will have an adverse impact on our lives and well-being, um, with, with the stress this will cause us and our community on a daily basis. This is not what we bought into, we were led to believe that a development of small businesses was planned for this site, um, which also showed up on the sales plan at, at the time we uh, we signed up. Those thirty-six people in support, um, do not live on the property line like we do. So, um, anyway, um, thank you for giving, giving uh, me the opportunity to speak uh, on our very real concerns regarding this project. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for sharing with us.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you make sure?
Okay, great, my name is Deb.
Can you make sure your device is muted, ma'am?
Yes.
Yeah, make sure your.
I def- I muted my device, are you, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, good evening, uh, Commissioners, my name is Deborah Silverman, I'm a two-year resident of Richfield and I would just like to make uh, three comments about this proposal. Uh, the first is to challenge or to appeal to the City Commissioners to think through the question of public good, of what you consider to be the definition and collective identity of Richfield. The proposal for this brewery brew pub, as Mr. Nelson has indicated, has many confusing parts, including he would like to have family-friendly, people enjoying nature with a beer. This means it excludes most of the communities that have been enjoying Richfield until this point, to privatize the entire area around a lake, has extreme social impact and environmental impact. I believe this has a form of fuzzy logic as Commissioner Kwan has indicated. When this issue came up first to the committee, I'm sorry, to the City Council initially, there was, as Melissa Pullman said, a vote on the idea of the amphitheater before the idea of the housing. The idea of collective community good for people of all backgrounds, as well as of nature to be preserved and celebrated are those two reasons why I moved there. The idea that you would privatize this and allow spillover into collective public gardens with an amphitheater that has tile created as an art project by the community to be turned into beer-drinking families who can afford twelve-dollar beers to enjoy the lake means you are excluding the disabled, those who cannot afford twelve-dollar beers, those who now walk the community lake with their families, with their strollers, including me. I don't have the stroller, but I see people of different backgrounds. This will actually create another kind of Richfield, a Richfield for a certain social demographic. I understand you want a brew pub and you want to celebrate a certain kind of socioeconomic uh, element, but this will close off nature and social access to people who don't have wristbands, who don't wanna drink alcohol and who are passing through on their way to the lake to be part of a common good, not a private collective enterprise for profit-making. Alcohol sales are the basis of any brew pub, restaurant or not. I was a patron of Lynn sixty-five, which I loved. This is not Lynn sixty-five, this is a brewery which will celebrate and capitalize on those who are alcohol-drinking, families or not, it will totally transform the den- the downtown of Richfield into a certain demographic and to a certain kind of community. And I just appeal to the City Council, is this the city that you want for your downtown? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Steph, um, maybe it's Jane, do you have any idea how many more callers are on hold at this time? Wondering if we need a break? Hello caller?
Uh, good evening, yes, my name is Mark Fearoff, uh, my address is one hundred Washington Avenue South in Minneapolis. Uh, I'm an attorney and I represent um, Rick Wiley and Julia Harper Wiley. Um, can, can you hear me? I see you're speaking on the screen.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, I did submit a, a, a letter that's in your packet, I'm not going to repeat everything in the letter, I'll try to be really brief, this meeting has gone long and I'm sure people wanna uh, keep, keep things moving. So, just three particularly salient points that I wanna, I wanna make. Uh, the first is that, this is of course an application to amend the PUD and for a conditional use permit. Uh, so one of the mandatory findings that the Commission has to make is that there's no undue adverse impacts uh, caused by this project. Um, we were fairly surprised to see in the staff report, uh, that the staff report didn't engage that issue at all, it simply says there's no adverse impact anticipated, uh, when I think the residents this evening have made the likely adverse impacts uh, very, very clear. Uh, I just wanna highlight, in my letter you'll see there's an aerial photograph with an actual measurement from the nearest balcony uh, to the first drinking rail and it's slightly less than a hundred feet. Uh, so we would submit to you that the idea of having um, every day in the warm weather, uh, a gathering of people and I, and they don't necessarily need to be rowdy, but a large gathering of people, um, having a good time, basically the distance from the, the residents' decks that you would have in Richfield between two backyard decks, um, is uh, a very significant and severe adverse impact for these residents. This was never part of the plan, it's not part of the current PUD, uh, so we would submit that moving the restaurant, uh, the currently approved restaurant from the southeast corner of the site to a loc- location much closer to the condos and allowing for a larger commercial building on the site than what was approved and allowing the amphitheater to be used as a commercial live entertainment venue, uh, will in fact have significant and lasting adverse impacts uh, on those adjacent residents. Um, the second point I want to draw your attention to relates to Outlet B. Um, it's very important to stress that this proposal relates to two uh, zoning parcels, two specific lots, there's Lot Three, which is the larger portion where the uh, brew pub would be located and there's Outlet B, which is the piece of real estate that the amphitheater uh, is located on. Your PUD ordinance says that every use that you have in a PUD has to be a permitted use in at least one of the mixed-use or PUD zoning districts in your zoning ordinance. Uh, the, the principal use, the only use in the principal structure on Outlet B is the amphitheater. An amphitheater is not a permitted use in any zoning district in the City of Richfield, there's no similar use in your zoning ordinance to an amphitheater. So this means you've got an application in front of you that's proposing a use for Outlet B that's not allowed. Uh, your ordinance says all the uses that are part of the PUD have to be allowed uses. So on that basis alone, uh, this, this application must be denied. Um, on the amphitheater issue, I want to respond briefly um, to the, the suggestion that somehow the proposal is to keep the amphitheater open to the public. That's not exactly right. Um, as you probably know, the, the sale that's contemplated would transfer Outlet B in fee to uh, Benefactor Brewing, they would be the owner of that site. There is an access easement that crosses the site to ensure that folks in the condos and the apartments can get to lake winds, but there is no easement for the amphitheater. So unless the city would require that uh, Benefactor dedicate that parcel to the public, grant an easement benefiting the public or something that hasn't happened, there's in no way, shape or form, uh, can you say that the amphitheater will remain open to the public. It's just uh, Benefactor telling you that that's their intention or that's their plan or maybe they'll do this or maybe they'll do that, but it's certainly not part of the documentation uh, that's in front of you this evening. Uh, the last point I wanna make is, uh, I, I, I wanna talk for a second about the lake. Um, Benefactor obviously believes that uh, being close to the lake is gonna make its business more profitable, that's why they wanna push everything from Lindale, the currently approved uh, site for the restaurant to the lake. Uh, but the lake belongs to the city and that it therefore belongs to the citizens of Richfield. Uh, allowing that the applicant to move the restaurant building as close as possible to the lake really equates to prioritizing the commercial interests of one party over the public welfare, not just the condo residents, but everybody who uses the lake and lives in that area. I just wanna thank you very much for your time this evening, uh, that uh, concludes my comments.
Thank you for your input. Hi caller?
Hello?
Hi, um, just make sure that your device is muted if you're watching us and go ahead with your name and address and then share your thoughts with us.
Okay, thank you, thank you Commissioners for the opportunity to uh, speak this evening. My name is Martha Joy and I live at sixty-three fifty-two Lindale Avenue South in the East Building in the East uh, three oh one unit. I'll be brief because a lot of my comments that I prepared are very similar to what my neighbors uh, outlined. Um, I'm in total agreement with everything that I have heard so far this evening. My husband and I moved into our condo about uh, in July of two thousand twenty, so just a little under two years ago. And we chose this location because we wanted to live close to parkland and the water and nature being so close was just a over-the-top um, amenity. And then the nearby shopping and this being so central to the metro area was just everything uh, that we were looking for. We do use our, we have a deck, um, I'll back, back the track a little bit, we have a deck that overlooks the, the, the lake and as Dan Miles pointed out, uh, we're, we're also very close to the amphitheater and we can almost look a little bit out and a little bit down and there's the amphitheater. And we spend a lot of time sitting out on the deck, relaxing and grilling and eating every opportunity we have, um, during the warm season out on the deck. And uh, we're very concerned about the development that uh, the Benefactor Brewery is, is um, has presented this evening. When we bought our unit and we made our plans to move here, we, we're told that the uh, area that the Benefactor Brewery is, is proposing to move into was going to be two or three small retail establishments. Um, there were different options, mentioned a small cafe, a coffee shop, um, bakery, those kinds of things. And when we heard about the plans of the Benefactor Brewery, got increasingly concerned. Um, and the, the plans to have a patio seating of over a hundred guests, including the use of the amphitheater, which was last summer in public hands. was going to be privatized. And every bit of the patio was going to have piped-in music even when there isn't entertainment in the amphitheater. And in addition, up to three times a week. Now, last summer, the entertainment was approximately twice a month. So this is a very significant difference from what we experienced last summer. So commissioners, I would ask you to try to stand in our shoes and understand our perspective. It's as though a neighbor of yours, next door or two doors down, had sold their property to a developer who had similar plans. And imagine how that would affect your quality of life. The staff report on the project states that a successful project should be well-designed and able to successfully integrate into the neighborhood without any undue adverse impact on public health, safety, and welfare. This project clearly does not meet these criteria and a development this large can't be successfully fit into this small space. Please do not vote to approve this project. And thank you very much for hearing us this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm trying to get an answer on if we have any idea how many callers are on hold or do we just know one at a time? So, yeah, Melissa?
Yeah, I asked Nellie and there's really no way to tell.
Okay. Great, I think maybe we'll take this one and then I'm going to propose a five-minute break. So we don't know how many more there'll be. I'm sorry.
Hello?
Hi caller, go ahead and mute your device you're watching us on and then start with your name and address. And go ahead.
My TV is muted, but not me. And I appreciate the technical glitches you've had. I was on hold for forty-five minutes and got disconnected and got back to the back of the line. So it's a challenge this evening. My name is Peter Hildger, H-I-L-G-E-R. I live at sixty-three fifty-four Lindale Avenue South in the lakeside at Lindale Condos with my wonderful wife of forty-five years. I want, first of all, to thank you for the time you're willing to commit to this, but not just to this, but all of the other things that you're working on to help this city in which we now call ourselves residents move forward. Second, I also want to thank some of the staff, Liz Pullman, and I had some conversations in the past and I appreciate her education. And I've had several conversations with Sean Hayford O'Leary, who is, my understanding, used to be part of this planning commission. So he was empathetic to our concerns and he and I communicated again today. So first of all, thanks to all of you. Second, Mr. Mark Thieroff spoke earlier. I hope to be ahead of him because he is far more articulate than me. But I wanted to set the message to you that although he represents Julie and Rick officially, what he has said has been signed off on by far and away the majority of the people in the condominium. So we're in total agreement with what he's had to say. But on a more personal note, I wanted to share with you my wife's and my experience. We first became aware of Lakeside in two thousand eighteen. So I guess we're some of the old folks here in both a literal sense and in terms of relationship to this organization. And we wanted to move from our home in St. Paul's where we lived on the Mississippi River with much the same relationship to nature that we were given the opportunity here. We lived there for thirty-five years. My wife and I are older and so she humorously said, this is going to be our forever home. We signed up November nineteenth, two thousand eighteen. I think there were about three people ahead of us. The development was promoted to us by Cornerstone Group that included Colleen Carey and her agents Lawrence Black and Nys Sullivan and Steve Sorry as a community venture with respect for nature and a collegial vibe amongst residents, businesses, and the existing neighborhood. She was incredibly proud of the amphitheater that she had built and she let us know it was private. She managed it, she organized the entertainment, and she wanted to keep it that way long-term because public access and a community vibe were really important globally in this development to her. She spoke in the same way in terms of the governance agreement that would oversee the development of all these areas. We even talked about the businesses. She knew that they were going to be entirely separate from the amphitheater and that they were going to be, as suggested by other callers, low-key, but truly retail businesses, but that fit with the remaining cultural vibe of this group. So I'm a capitalist, to be sure, but I also believe in keeping your word. As you've been told earlier, she quickly turned and wanted to include the amphitheater with the commercial property with the brew pub being moved closer to the shore. That's a complete deceit of us and changed our enjoyment of this home entirely. Many people have spoken to it, we concur wholeheartedly. We find the people at Benefactor Brewery to be disingenuous at best. Oh yeah, we'll accommodate this, we'll accommodate that, we'll see about closing at eleven o'clock, we'll see about closing at twelve o'clock. They had numerous opportunities to meet with our group and pushed it off to the last minute. And Mr. Thieroff can document that for you. And so I don't believe for a moment the truth in what they say. I'm happy that they want to make this a successful business, but it's hard for me to believe that that won't be at our expense. Finally, as the city thinks about it, does the city really want to be a chronic mediator between the commercial venture of a brewery and a residential neighborhood who have two entirely different views of what should be? And that's going to be a chronic, ongoing problem. And I certainly wouldn't want to be a policeman in Richfield having to go basically get myself in the middle of the domestic three times a week. They talked about initially using the amphitheater six to eight times in a season. The most recent document says they might use it three times a week. My wife and I don't want to be any part of that.
Excuse me?
I thank you for your indulgence.
Yeah, go ahead.
I thank you for your indulgence and time and your commitment. Have a pleasant evening.
You too, thank you so much. So we can just keep going through the callers and then take a five-minute break? What, is that your head nod? Or would you like to take a break now if someone wants to make a motion for a five-minute break or whatever you can? Otherwise, we could just keep going through the callers and then take a five-minute break? Okay, we will keep going through the callers. Thanks.
Hello?
Hi caller, could you make sure that you're muted on your end, your device that you're watching us on? And then go ahead with your name and address and your thoughts.
Okay, the TV is off, so hopefully we won't have any connection problems. But my name, good evening, first of all, good evening. And thank you very much to the planning commission for the time that you have allowed us here at Lakeside Lindale to discuss our opposition and concerns. My name is Ellen Murphy. I live at six-three five-six Lindale Avenue South in building west, I mean, in unit west one oh four. My circumstance is very, very similar to many of my neighbors. However, it's a little different in that I was brand-new to the greater Minneapolis area when I moved to Lakeside at Lindale in two thousand twenty. In October of two thousand nineteen, I made the personal decision to move from downtown Chicago to the greater Minneapolis area. This was at the recommendation, unfortunately, of my oncologist as a result of my health. I had just finished my fourth breast cancer surgery and was undergoing the fourth chemo and radiation treatment. And although I loved Chicago, I was not getting any younger and my health was not getting any better. And she recommended that I get out of the fast-paced life into a more settled, stable environment. I chose this area because my family, I've got several sisters or a couple of sisters and then others that come during the summer, you know, around the greater Minneapolis area. So I obviously hired a Realtor. And as you can understand, she showed me several very nice area suburban communities. It was something about Lakeside at Lindale, however, and Richfield that I felt a strong pull and sway. And a lot of that has been already said in terms of the, you know, the walking trails, the beautiful natural environment, trails around the lake, trails to the amphitheater, trails to, you know, walking trails to Lake Winds. And then last but not least, the highly touted amphitheater situation, which was a public access and basically a cultural center where one could basically show their arts, music, and, you know, maybe in some cases, you know, feel their dreams for a venue to entertain in front of public folks from Richfield. I signed the purchase agreement late November of two thousand nineteen and I moved to the condo from Chicago in July of two thousand twenty. Unfortunately, shortly after, I was diagnosed again with metastatic breast cancer, so it spread. And so I say this not to get sympathy, but just so you understand how passionate I am about this particular circumstance. Around March to May of two thousand twenty-one, I don't remember the date, but we started hearing rumblings of this brew pub proposal. In my research and in my dialogue, I discovered that discussion of this brew pub was going on with Colleen Carey and Benefactor prior to my signing in November of two thousand nineteen, when I was told at that time that the plan was a small shopping center, as you've heard from many other of my neighbors. To be completely honest, I would not have bought here if I had known that this proposal was on the table. I feel, and I won't go into a lot of detail because it's already has, but the proposal, in my opinion, is very inconsistent and not compatible, you know, with the greater plan of downtown Richfield by the city and would, you know, certainly present undue adverse environmental impacts and effects for those of us that live, what I say, practically on top of this amphitheater and this Benefactor Brewery plan. Several things, and I'll just, you know, noise is key. You know, when we're talking about three times a week with live bands at the amphitheater, how does one really, you know, prevent the noise? Noise is not a finite thing that basically knows how to stop at a property line. Basically piped-outside music is also in addition to the live band. Odors, others have mentioned this, in the proposal I've read something about it's, you know, the noises will, the odors will not be perceptible outside the property line. Again, this is not finite, you know. There is nothing magical that says a smell is going to stop at a property line. Lighting control, you know, is a big issue, the car lights, the amphitheater lights, the, you know, the lights that were mentioned at the property. And last but not least, one of my biggest concerns, and this has been discussed a little bit, and that's the issue of parking. In my research or in our research, we have found that, you know, the Henley, quite frankly, the apartments, they have very limited parking, and I believe they have less than the standard ratio. But whether they do or not, we have issues of overflow and we find that many of the Henley guests have parked in our private spots because of the lack of parking. So I'm very concerned, I know someone mentioned earlier about the formula and that the plan does meet the formula as it relates to the square footage of the building, et cetera. But I didn't hear in there anywhere where the formula incorporated or, you know, contemplated the draw from the, the draw of crowds, if you will, from the amphitheater. So I'm concerned about the parking significantly. And I know that Lindale Avenue has been proposed as, you know, overfull parking. I know that that's a very busy street and, you know, I have public safety concerns.
Yeah, excuse me. You have made, we're about at five minutes, so if you could just finish your thought real quick?
Okay, so bottom line, or in conclusion, I am not against the city's comprehensive plan. I endorse growth and development, that's a good thing for everybody. But I just feel strongly that this is not the right project or tenant to be on this property. We do not know, or I don't know, of any other breweries, brew pubs that are so close to the residential areas this one will be. So I certainly would hope, you know, that the commission denies this proposal and appreciate in advance your consideration of such. Thank you.
Thank you. And to the callers still watching and waiting to get in, if you do think, we absolutely want to hear from everybody, but if you think you're repeating a lot of things that have been repeated a lot, if you want to just maybe touch on some new things or, you know, be a little more efficient in your sharing, but it's up to you. So we'll wait for the next caller. Thank you.
Chair Quam, we don't have any more callers on the line.
Wow. Hey, thanks, Nellie.
Yep.
Do I make a motion to close?
Chair Quam, sorry, I spoke too soon, there's another caller.
Okay, thanks, Nellie. Hi caller.
Hello?
Hi, just make sure you're muted on your device and then if you would share your name and address and go ahead.
Sure. Uh, yes, this is Deborah Silverman again. I had one more minute, I just wanted to make one more comment, is that okay?
Yes, that's okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you to the commissioners. I just, I had one more comment that I had forgotten. My name's Deborah Silverman, I live on Lindale, a two-year resident. I just had one more comment, which is that I would like the commission and the city council to please look closely at Benefactor. Mr. Nelson does not seem to have much experience. He makes a lot of promises. There were very, very vague issues about, of course, we're going to consider late opening and late closing. But I just would like to make sure that it seemed to me that the position for the daycare and the parking were very stringently applied. And there are many areas in the case of Benefactor that have been very indulgent or at least more flexible. So I would like the city to really consider whether it is the brew pub that they give priority over other projects and especially for someone who seems very inexperienced in a business, as I've done research on Mr. Nelson. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, Chair. This is Homer Johnson.
Yes.
I move that we close the public.
Can't quite hear, couldn't fully hear you. I think you want to move to close the public hearing.
Yes, I move that we close the public hearing and take a five-minute recess.
Um, okay, I'm personally not comfortable closing the public hearing if there are more callers, but I think we're about done.
I'm sorry. That was on the condition that we didn't have any more callers, I apologize.
I see. Okay, thank you, just one moment, Nellie, anybody else?
Chair Quam, there is nobody else right now.
Okay, I second Commissioner Holmberg Johnson's motion to close a public hearing, any discussion on that? Okay, staff, could you take a role?
Yes, Chair Quam?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmberg Johnson?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Keneely?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza?
Aye.
Commissioner Thurma?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, do you want to make your motion, your second part of your motion again, please?
Please.
Having closed the public hearing, I move that we take a five-minute recess.
A second, any discussion? Staff, would you take a role on a five-minute recess?
Chair Quam?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmberg Johnson?
Commissioner Holmberg Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Keneely?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza?
Aye.
Commissioner Sirma.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. See everybody in five minutes. Hey, welcome back, everybody. Um, the meetings. They have returned to our meeting officially. Um, so what will happen now is if staff would respond to some of the public hearing questions or comments that they wrote down. And then we'll give the applicant the chance to respond. I know you raised your hand earlier. Um, and then commissioners can discuss and ask questions and then we will make a vote. So, um, staff, could you respond to anything that you heard, thought you should respond to from the public hearing?
Quam, um, didn't hear any direct questions, but I'll, I'll just try to speak to some of the issues as, as we see it. Um, you know, we heard, heard a significant number of comments regarding noise. Um, and frankly, yeah, um, there's potential that, um, some activities could be heard from the adjoining properties. Um, in terms of what, um, the review is, is this, this body is, uh, determined to make a recommend, or is tasked with making a recommendation on how, how to proceed that and, um, uh, proceed with, with the application. And one of the findings is, as, uh, people mentioned, is that there's no undue adverse impacts. Uh, in general, the undue, uh, portion of that is something that's not to be expected. Um, or is, uh, excessive. So, um, staff's approach to that is, um, to just clearly limit, um, and define the parameters by which, uh, outdoor-related activities can occur. Um, frankly, the, the commission can agree or disagree, but that was, um, uh, what we felt was a, a reasonable approach to addressing that issue. Um, with regard to lighting, um, there, the, the plans did show where lights would be and, uh, you know, our lighting ordinances, um, are in effect and, uh, you know, they would have to comply with, um, with the current lighting ordinance and, um, that, uh, revolves around not, not, um, allowing glare over on adjoining properties. So, uh, the specific, uh, details of that would, would need to be approved as they install them. Um, so, yeah, I think those were a number of the issues. Um, there were, was discussion about, um, just the amphitheater in general. Um, I, you know, I, I think we touched on how that came about. Um, but I will say in terms of this review, um, you know, it, it can, it will continue to be in, in amphitheater. So the question of whether that can be included in, in this approval, um, not sure that that's relevant because it's an existing feature. Um, so, uh, yeah, that, that's what, um, I think suffices, uh, at this time. Certainly I'd be happy to answer any more questions that the commission has.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson, you raised your hand. Did you want to make a quick reply earlier?
Yeah.
In response to a caller.
Yes, thank you, Chair Quam. Um, I, I just wanted to mention that we engaged with the condo owners, who I believe every caller was a condo owner. Uh, in November, we were originally planning on presenting during the December Planning Commission, as, um, staff can attest to. We decided to delay that, uh, one month at a time. As we tried to and have continued to try to work through, uh, some of the concerns that the condo owners, uh, brought up on the calls that they, they shared with us. We met with them in person in January and I thought we had a very productive meeting. Uh, to which the takeaway was for our side to draft some documents that would help explain our use and some of the items that we discussed. We shared those documents with the condo owners on February third and have not received any response from their attorney, uh, Mark, who called in as well. Um, so I'm not sure where the sentiment that we have not been communicative is coming from, but it's been almost two full months since we provided those documents and we were expecting feedback and an iterative process to work through some of their concerns and have not received any response from them, uh, related to those documents. So, um, I'm sure there are other questions about some of the specific, uh, items related to our plans, which we'd be happy to take, but I wanted to address that one because we have been trying and would still very much like to come to some sort of amicable re- resolution that, um, you know, protects the condo owners from some of the things that they're concerned about and also allows us to move forward with these plans.
Okay, uh, thank you. Commissioners, now, um, Commissioner, time for Commissioner discussion or questions? If the question is specifically posed to the applicants, then they could respond, but otherwise we'd like to reserve this time for commissioners to discuss and debate. And, um, so, uh, Commissioner Sturza?
Thank you, Chair Quam. One question for city staff before I, um, prevent my comment. There was, um, comments made about the amphitheater not being a permitted use in the PUD, in a PUD, and I was just wondering to see, um, if you could comment on that and, um, then, uh, perhaps, um, share any thoughts on how that should, uh, factor into our deliberations here tonight.
Yeah, so, um, I'm not, not sure where that assessment comes from, but, uh, the way our PUD ordinances work is that, um, the allowable uses in a PUD are set by the guiding district for each individual approved PUD. So, in this case, this is a planned mixed-use PUD. And in the mixed, uh, so that uses the three mixed-use guide, um, zoning districts as the guiding districts. And in that instance, um, in that district, um, live entertainment is a permitted use. Um, so I can't speak to if that was the specific philosophy in terms of when that was initially developed. Uh, Melissa has more on that background. I see that she, um, uh, turned on, uh, her camera. Did you have anything to add about the history that, um, but that, that's our, my response to that.
Thanks, Ryan. I, I would just add that also recreational facilities are specifically, um, allowed and, and this would generally fall under that. No, we don't have a specific amphitheater, um, category. However, in this case, um, that amphitheater has been approved. Um, it is not something that you are considering as part of this. It exists. It's been approved in previous, um, in previous approvals by the city council.
Thank you for that clarification. Um, in terms of comments on, uh, the proposal, um, it's really exciting. Like, I'm excited by this proposal. Um, I think that, um, it is a wonderful use of that land. I think it is a wonderful, um, takes advantage of the lake, uh, in a way that will help people, um, interact with it, and I love that. Um, we are reviewing this not because this is a new idea. Like, we, the city has already said a restaurant would be okay in this spot. Um, and so I'm not, I hear the neighbors' concerns about noise. I'm worried about, like, how we could mitigate some of those concerns. But a restaurant would create noise on this site. Um, this was never planned to be a park. It is, uh, private land that, um, I, it's very unfortunate the way the communication has gone so far between what sounds, or it's appears as if communication really, um, has not been great between, um, private parties, but from a city perspective, this, a proposal like this should not be surprising. I think it's in line with what we, as a city, had hoped for this property. Um, there are some specifics questions I have about hours of operation that I think need to be cleared up. Um, it looks like we have one of the conditions, um, that staff is suggesting notes that, um, the amphitheater could be used, um, until closing time on Fridays and Saturdays. And there, right now, it looks like closing time could be as late as, um, two AM according to city staff, and I don't think that um, the amphitheater should be used at two AM. Uh, it doesn't sound like, um, the applicant is suggesting he wants to use it at two AM. So I feel like we might want to clean up some of those, um, details, but on a whole, I just want to say that I'm really excited by this proposal and, um, look forward to hearing other comments from other commissioners.
Commissioner Holmveig Johnson.
Yes, I wanted to also say that I think this is, um, really exciting and it will bring, um, an experience that doesn't exist currently in Richfield. Um, for people to go after work or for families or whatever the case may be. There isn't anything like this currently in Richfield. I'm wondering, um, if to alleviate some of, um, it sounds like there's a difference of interpretation between the city staff and the applicant's attorney about closing hours. I'm wondering also if we could, um, if, could we put a condition that the, uh, the applicant is saying that eleven PM is what he understands the latest hours he's allowed to operate, uh, can we attach a, um, requirement that he will be open later than eleven PM and can we also, I guess, is, um, can we also attach a requirement that the amphitheater be open for so many public uses, um, per year to, to try and alleviate some of the concerns of these, uh, owners?
Uh, yeah, I, maybe I'll just jump in and speak to that. Certainly you can add the, uh, hours of operation, um, condition. Um, and I got to pass over to Melissa on the, I, I understand that there was some sort of an arrangement uh, in terms of public uses. Maybe you can speak to that a little bit more than, than, than I could.
That's correct. Commissioners, there is currently an agreement that would allow the city to utilize the amphitheater up to six times per year. Um, and so that is, that is, um, in a, in a separate agreement, the one that was also referenced where the city is helping, taking on a loan that was currently held by Hennepin County and is now held by the Richfield HRA. That agreement includes a stipulation that the city would be allowed to, um, utilize the amphitheater up to six times per year.
So, Chair Quam, um, I, I am not as excited about it. Um, I, I just, um, for one thing, this isn't our deciding factor, but I can't imagine how those new homeowners feel. Um, and I know that we could, a, a restaurant's different than a microbrewery. I think it's just a different vibe and a different clientele. So I would, I'd be much more comfortable with a restaurant being there. Um, I'm a little fuzzy on the public easement across, you know, access to the amphitheater and lake. There shouldn't be any, my feeling, any barrier to getting the people in the apartments on the, um, east side across over to the, the lake or the amphitheater. I'm really concerned about, um, the wildlife. I mean, I walk there a lot and it's, it's like, almost like a protected marshland feel. There's there's heron and muskrats and I, I can't imagine how they're gonna fare or how the impact that will have on that. That, um, really important, um, feature of Richfield, um. It can't all just be at the nature center. It, it's just a little haven for wildlife down there. And, um, I just can't see how we get past that cra- that point of undue, uh, development, not have undue adverse impacts on neighboring properties. I, I heard everyone who called in and I think it will. It just simply will. I think we could put some limits on it. It sounds like, you know, I'm gonna, possibly I'm gonna be in the minority here, but, um, whatever limitations we could put on it. But I, I don't think it meets that, that criteria at all. Um, I'd be more comfortable with the restaurant. Um, there's no lighting on the amphitheater now, so it could be of a condition that lighting would not be added. And that would dissuade from outdoor, you know, concerts later at night in the future. And that would dissuade from outdoor, you know, concerts later at night in the future. Um but and and just to say to the callers that the city council will, we're just recommending and they often. Go in down their own vein, so um this isn't the end of it, or whatever we decide, um be sure and concentrate there too. I'll pass. Commissioner Kneely.
Hi, thank you Chair, um I I wanna think. Our uh our applicants for sticking with us and and then going through this process, this is a huge uh time commitment. Um we we heard from a lot of residents and. I I'm really struggling with with uh this this proposal and the feedback we've received, the volume of public comments. Um pushing back is is something that I haven't experienced as a planning commissioner. Um while I, I believe that this. Proposal would benefit the community in numerous ways and I think it's very thoroughly thought out, I think it's a great proposal. Um I I am really struggling with feedback we've gotten from neighbors. A lot of their fears might turn out to be unfounded, but uh. They're 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 united. Thank you.
Commissioner Sirma.
Yeah, I certainly hear the 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 fears of the neighbors uh here, but I I. Nonetheless, I don't see reason as per our own rules to deny. This wholesale, I do think there are valid concerns that I would be, I I think we should attach conditions to. Like the public access, I think that's maybe my my biggest concern here is making sure that. There is still public access from Lyndale to the lake and north-south um. From the apartment south towards Lakewood, that those public access paths are maintained. I think that's my biggest concern here, and I also would like to clarify the use of the amphitheater. And when it is in public use versus private use, I understand it's not a fully public space right now. But I I think the usage of that space and. And its hours of operation uh should be conditioned here, but overall. I don't see, I I can't find a reason myself to fully deny the project wholesale.
Uh other commissioners, Commissioner Home, Big Johnson.
Um I just wanted to respond to uh something Commissioner Kneely said, and I I agree that the. Um I, the neighbors appeared to be united in their opposition to this project. I got the feeling from many of them, however, that they would be opposed to any development at all, but they would prefer to keep it the way it is exactly. Um and that's, that's not what's see, that that's not what's in the the plan and the vision for this part of the city. So, well, although I understand their concerns. I feel like no matter what what um what uh possible development was brought is brought beforeward. They would object with the same kinds of things, because inevitably any type of business will bring traffic, people, noise, no matter what it is. Um so I I got the feeling that really it wasn't this project necessarily, but it was any project um being there, they just did not want.
Commissioner Kneely.
Thank you, I I appreciate that point of view, um. We we heard a lot about residents um feeling like they were misled by the developer and. I I I choose to uh. Lend lend some weight to their position that they would have been okay with small retail, that they would have been okay with. Coffee shops, sandwich shops, those kinds of things, um they were led to believe that. Those types of developments or or businesses would be part of the development. Um but yeah, changes, change is scary, so I I appreciate your point, Commissioner.
This is Chair Kwam, um I respectfully disagree, I think they would much prefer a quieter restaurant-type thing, I I I. I don't think um. I don't think it's fair to say they're just against uh change, um but. I think it's more nuanced than that, I would rather live by a restaurant than um. A microbrewery if I were those those neighbors or uh or the wildlife or the people that walk there. Um just, I I don't, I don't think it's fair, um it might be better for Richfield, but. Um. That's not enough to make me support it and I I just simply don't think it 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 can. To me, it can't be argued, it doesn't have undue adverse impact. On the neighboring properties, so that's my stumbling block right there. Commissioner Serse.
Thank you, I'm struggling with what um. What the difference is between a restaurant that could serve liquor. And a microbrewery and the clientele assumptions that go with both, because. I don't, like I, I'm honestly struggling with that, like I don't understand the assumptions of like. Why a microbrewery would be dramatically different than. Why living next to a microbrewery would be dramatically different than living next to a restaurant, I um, I mean. I I I if, could you explain that Chair Kwam, what you're thinking, I'm just not understanding that the. How how you're looking at them as different clientele.
Um because the, generally the focus is more on. Uh it was a microbrewery, I sense the focus is more on the brewery and the music and then or and the gaming. Um it's, it's a different. Feel I think than a restaurant that serves liquor as a, you know, in addition, like pizza luce is. About the food and the liquor, but the food is a huge component and um. I I I think they have different rules, um but I I I just think the focus is more on a. A a little in my, in my perception and what I saw in southwest Minneapolis with a couple. One that was built in southwest Minneapolis in a residential neighborhood, just a a louder, younger clientele.
It's interesting that you bring up um pizza luce because I think of this is very similar proposal and, you know, very close to residential. Um homes and um how much the community has embraced pizza pizza luce, I would expect a similar embrace here. Um I guess if. To move the conversation along, do we want to talk about how we could mitigate noise? Perhaps by thinking about um hours of operation or outdoor use? And limits limiting hours in that regard or um how best to continue the conversation, do you think?
Yes, Chair Kwam, I would like to add those limitations, I think um. It would be very, this would be the time to do it, um and then hopefully the city council picking up on that, Commissioner Home, Big Johnson.
Yes, thank you, I'm I'm sure, I just wanted to ask city staff, obviously they would be su- subject to already existing noise ordinances. Can you just briefly uh explain like what what those limits look like in a in for for a restaurant or a retail establishment?
Sure, so those um are administered by public safety staff and um there's differing sets of noise levels. Uh based on daytime and nighttime, um generally daytime, nighttime's gonna start, I believe it's at ten PM. And again, it's a certain noise level, the way that that works is uh we, those are enforced basically on a uh complaint basis, so when there's, when there's an issue. Um the PD would would come out and uh uh make that assessment as to whether a um a violation is made.
Other questions or comments, um if we do get to the point of a motion. Um we can make a motion and then uh add amendments to it. Or you can make your own motion, you don't have to make the recommended motion. Then we can discuss more after a motion, so. Commissioners Serse.
Could we ask the applicant um if they would be um adverse to. Uh like right now, can we have a condition um in the resolution that says that um. Events need to end by eight PM Sunday through Thursday and closing time on Fridays and Saturdays. I mean, if we just said events shall end by eight PM, is that. Something that the applicant would be comfortable with, or is that worth a conversation or would the applicant comment on that?
Okay, wasn't sure if I needed to ask permission or not, um. I I think we would be open to, if by events we mean uses of the amphitheater, I think we would be open to. Um agreeing to end them by eight PM and all nights, if that's what we need to do.
If I may add, I, one thing that we have discussed with the condo owners previously was ending them by dusk. Um just so that it, you know, can vary kind of with the summer hours, but we're, we're flexible, the one thing I I would ask a a question of is. Uh if we wanted to host a a special event that was going to exceed that time limit, is there a process for doing that? If there's just, you know, one event per year or or even if the city, you know, if we wanted to work with the city to host some sort of, you know, fun city event. Could we get like a special use permit to go beyond that if needed?
Though the way, the way the uh condition is worded now, it, you know, it doesn't reference any special events. It's up to the planning commission, you could divide it in some manner that, you know, with. With, there could be a one-time exception for a one-time event, you could, you could make the wording along along those lines if if you so choose.
Thank you, another question I had was the um outdoor seating to the north of the site, like right now it's to the north and to the west of the site. The north side seems like it's most likely to create a noise disturbance to the neighbors, is there um. When we're reviewing this application, are we reviewing the location, like are those tables and the numbers are like in the site plan review, are are those. Binding, can we have a conversation about outdoor seating and how much is permitted, is like. Um just wondering what our scope of review is in that space.
Yeah, I thi- I think those seating elements are illustrative. Um I I don't think we would be out there checking to make sure that each table is in its, in its place. Um but it's meant to give a general sense of approximately what to expect. Um so, you know, potentially, you could look at limiting certain locations. Um but you would have to kind of give specificity to that, um. So.
Commissioners Serse, are you about to speak?
Um I'm trying to figure out procedurally how best to um gauge the the. Temperature of the room of um with some limitations on. Hours of operation in an amphitheater and um how I could phrase the limitations on the. Seating to the north, if there were other. Conditions that planning commissioners might want to consider, might be cleaner to talk about them all right now. Than to make a proposal or to make a motion, or do you think we should make a motion and then talk about the specific conditions?
Well. I I think it's getting, it's pretty cumbersome, so maybe we need a starting point of a motion and then. Go one amendment at a time and discuss those.
Uh I'll make a motion uh to approve the resolution for a final uh or final development plan and conditional use permit. For an amended planned unit development at sixty-four oh two Lyndale Avenue South.
Is there a second? It doesn't mean we're voting for it just.
Madam Chair, uh Home Big Johnson here, I second.
All right, okay, so now we will have discussion on that and that can include. Various amendments and each amendment can stand or fail on its own. And then we go back, it's kind of, and then we go back to the original and vote on it with the amendments that pass, so now we go to the smaller ones. Propose, discuss each um and vote on them individually. Unless you want to lump some together, but it might be safer to. Do them individually since we aren't sure how each other is thinking, um so would someone like to make uh would do, yeah, an amendment to that original?
I'll move to make, or I'll make an amendment or move to make or just make an amendment.
However.
Sure, okay, um let's start with the um under. The third. Um. No, uh. So.
Commissioners Serse.
Thank you.
Don't, don't worry about being super formal here and following the rules of order, I would just make it clear what you're. Proposing to change, so for instance, if you're proposing to amend it so that no um, no performances will be allowed after dusk or eight PM. Just say that and we could adopt it and and staff will take care of uh amending the actual language.
Yeah, so um on the point um under three, the third bullet point where we um on page twenty-five of the PDF. Where we talk about live um entertainment, musical performances on the amphitheater, I would um. Like that to change to say um that events shall end by dusk. Daily, no matter the day of the week. And that um a special work or a special permit may be requested um. By, for review by city staff. For the occasional annual anniversary party or whatever the the big event is.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Commissioner, Commissioner Sir.
All right, discussion on that specific. Amendment of stopping the outdoor by dusk and. The ability to apply for a special occasion. Melissa.
Commissioners, there's a, just for clarity, uh did you want to put a number on the, the number of times that they would be able to request a special permit? For instance, two or three times a year, I just think I, the the condo owner spoke about clarity, so um.
Um twice a year.
And then Commissioner Home, Big Johnson, are you okay with that change?
That's, that's actually what I was gonna suggest, that we set a specific.
And also just on on that very uh solid point of clarification, um the the note about. Um limited to no more than three nights per week, continue, I I still feel like that um part of the bullet would still be applicable.
Okay, discussion. Commissioner Kneely.
For clarity, um are we, are we talking about any outdoor events or just outdoor events on the amphitheater space?
Just the amphithe- amphitheater space.
Okay, thank you.
I am struggling a little with the amendment because I I like two of the three points, so I like the. They can apply for special for twice a year, I like the um. Limited to three times a week, but I would like, I I'm more comfortable with saying not past eight PM because I think dusk in the summer, when can't dusk be. Nine fifty or ten, pretty late. Um so I'm not sure how to vote on that, I guess I'd have to.
Can we amend it, an amendment, I mean, I'm fine with eight PM as well.
Thank you.
People more comfortable, I'm.
And it's more, it's more clean, I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to talk over you.
Nope.
Um it's a little more clear. clear when to dispute when dusk is. Are, are you comfortable with that change, Commissioner Holbig Johnson?
Yeah, I, I feel like eight is really early in the summer time law. But I mean, if that, if that best balances the interests of the neighbors and the business, then that seems reasonable.
Okay, so we have a motion and second on that. Other discussion on that amendment with those three points. Okay, uh, staff, would you take role on the amendment?
Yes, Chair Quam.
Aye.
Commissioner Holbig Johnson.
Holbig Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Keneely.
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza. Commissioner Serma.
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Are there any other, is there other discussion or other amendments? Commissioners?
For sake of plain language, I would like to, um, if the, limiting the amount of outdoor seating on the north side, I think would mitigate some of the noise concerns. I don't know, I know specificity is important in that, and I'm, um, would be open to hearing suggestions on how we could specifically limit not, limit seating on that north side. If anyone has suggestion.
The difficulty I have with that proposal is, um, with that, i- if you limit seating, how do you limit just people walking over and using the drink rails and, and hanging out there? I, I, if, if there is patio space, I see people filling it whether they're sitting or standing.
I mean, I'm open to if, um, people don't think it will mitigate the noise, um, if, if it won't accomplish that goal, then it's, I'm trying to figure out how we could, um, address some of the neighbors' concerns with still supporting, uh, in what I think is a really great use of the property. So if other commissioners have suggestions on how other or staff have suggestions on how we could mitigate some of those noise concerns, I know that we likely won't eliminate them. But, um, certainly I would love to show some good faith here of trying to hear out what the neighbors are saying.
I, I have a, a different question for commissioners. We've, we've discussed putting, uh, an eight P M. Limit on performances in the amphitheater. Do we want to discuss limiting patio hours, um, earlier than eleven P M.?
This is Chair Quam, I was strongly, I'd be really happy with that as a, another thing to add as an amendment.
Do we need to look at, uh, what Pizza Luce does? I, I, I would hate to propose different hours for different locations, but they're not as close to the condos, of course. Sorry for thinking out loud here.
Melissa?
Melissa.
Commissioner Keneely, I, I will say I, I don't believe that we specifically limit the hours of Pizza Luce's patio. We can certainly look into that prior to the, uh, city council meeting. I will say that there are condominiums, um, immediately adjacent to Pizza Luce. So I, I would say that they probably are equidistant.
Thank you.
Mr. Holbig Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, my thought might, uh, would be that if, um, city noise ordinance becomes tighter or stricter at ten P M., that would seem like a logical time to restrict patio hours, uh, in line with other things expected to be quiet. So I would be, I would be happy to, to add a condition that patio hours, uh, close at ten.
So you're making a motion for that amendment?
Correct. I'm sorry, Madam Chair, to not be clear. I move that we add a condition that the patio be closed at ten P M. Each night.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Keneely seconds.
Okay, discussion on that ten P M. Time, Commissioner Sturza?
Just because it's new, can we ask the applicants for any reaction to that kind of limitation?
So my, my initial reaction, uh, thank you, is that it makes me a little bit nervous in this co- post-COVID world, um, where over the last two years, we've seen many restaurants and breweries and establishments really utilize their patios more so in order to make their guests feel safe. I, I hope that we're beyond that, but I, I don't know that we are. So I, I don't think in, you know, if you'd asked us three years ago whether reducing or limiting the patio hours was a concern of ours, I don't think we would have said it was. Just the last two years have made me a little bit nervous about it.
Thank you. Commissioner Serma?
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad, uh, the point about Pizza Luce was brought up. I, 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 since I, I don't think we have a limit there, it makes me a little uncomfortable treating, but seem like fairly comparable cases differently. So I, I, I don't, I don't think I'm in favor, favor of that if we're going to treat these two so similar things differently.
This is Chair Quam. I, my perception is that Pizza Luce is most, the bigger part of the patio is on a really noisy county road. So they do seem different to me. I guess I, I see that there's, the high-rise residential is real close to the parking lot. But, um, my perception is that it's a much noisier area and busier area. So where are we at?
Chair Quam, there's a motion in a second.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so we're discussing that ten P M. Okay. Did you want to follow up, Ms. Simpson?
Yes, thank you. Um, I, I just thinking based on your comment about Pizza Luce, I, I mean, if, if there's possibility for us to limit the north side of the patio, so that if there are people that are continuing to, to enjoy the outside, but we congregate them um, on the side closer to Lakewins, further away from the condo owners, that would hopefully help alleviate some of the noise. I don't know how we would formalize that, but I think that's something that we would welcome as a, a way to figure out how to make sure that if there are people outside, we get them as far away from the condos as possible.
Okay, are we ready for a vote or?
Madam Chair. Um, is there, oh, I, that sounds eminently reasonable to me. Can we, is there, without being annoyingly vague to city staff, is there a way that we can ask city staff to draft it in such a way to, to clear out the north, the north patio space, but let the, let people stay on the other part of the patio?
Melissa, you wanna?
You can, you can give.
I, you know, we can certainly take, um, our, our shot at it. Um, I think we generally understand what you're getting at. I think just offhand, the issue for me would be what's the north-south line, right? I just, just conceptually, maybe it makes sense to run it with the building line, just because that's a much more measurable thing that you could easily identify. Uh, but that's just my, my first, uh, shot at an answer.
So other questions, Chair Quam, how late would the other portion be open for the patio? That, I never got a clear feel for that, so a different answer from the applicant and city staff. So how long, how late could they be on the patio on the later side?
So from our business licensing, um, as I understand, as for, um, you know, any other full-service restaurant, the hours are two, two A M. Um, I'm not sure if Sam's referencing state statute or some other restriction that, you know, we, that's not in our books, but, um, I see he's raising his hand, so maybe he can speak to it a little bit clearer.
But it seems there must be a, a legal limit. I mean, not.
Yes, from, from the city's standpoint, the licensing, you can sell until two A M.
Okay.
What our licenses allow for.
Right.
Again, he might be referencing some other license or approvals through some other agency.
Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to track down the state statute that I think limits taprooms. But I will just say that we're open to a condition or an amendment that says we won't be open past eleven P M. Because that's our understanding of the law. And we have no plans on being open past then. So if that helps, that's what our intention is. And frankly, we, we aren't planning on being open until eleven every night anyways, but you know, we don't, we don't want to limit ourselves unnecessarily if we can draw a line at eleven and say, well, you know, we'll close then, we're happy to do that.
Okay, so. Yeah, sorry, Commissioner Holbig Johnson.
If I'm, if I'm right, then I don't know if this is the right parliamentary procedure, but if I could withdraw my previous amendment and make a new amendment, that the patio, uh, would close on then, using the building as the dividing line on the north side, no later uh, than ten P M. And the entire, uh, uh, the entire business would close no later than eleven P M. Uh, seven days a week. That would be, wow, that's my revised amendment.
Okay, and second?
Commissioner Keneely seconds.
All right, discussion. Staff, would you take role on that amendment?
Yes, thank you. Chair Quam?
Aye.
Commissioner Holbig Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Keneely?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza?
Aye.
Commissioner Serma?
Aye.
That amendment also passes.
Thank you. Any other amendments or discussion? Okay, so now we'll go back to the original motion with the approved amendments attached. Is anyone, I don't know, staff, could you try to summarize that for us so we all are sure what we're voting on? Thanks, Melissa. Or Ryan?
I, I've been taking role, so maybe, maybe I'll do this one. Okay, so this is, this would be a motion to approve the final development plan, conditional use permit and conditional use permit for an amended planned unit development at sixty-four oh two Lindell Avenue South with amended conditions to close the patio on the north side of the building at the building line by ten P M. And to limit the hours of operation to eleven P M. On all days of the week. And also to limit amphitheater events, uh, to eight P M. All nights of the week, but to allow for two special permits per year approved by staff.
Thank you. So now, uh, so a discussion?
Was there, I'm sorry, maybe I missed it. Was there a motion to, to, to move what I just?
We had our motion and our amendments, and then still we have to, okay, you're right.
Now someone needs to move the whole body. So move what Melissa just said.
Okay, thank you.
Second, Commissioner Serma, what Melissa said.
All right, discussion. Hey, staff, would you take role?
Yes, Chair Quam?
No.
Commissioner, uh, Holbig Johnson?
Uh, Holbig Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Keneely?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza?
Aye.
Commissioner Serma?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, thanks, everybody. It's quite a bit of work. Yeah, Ryan?
And I'll just remind, uh, folks that are watching that this goes on to the city council and that would fall in line with April twelfth, I believe is the next available.
And they can reach out to their, to the council?
Yeah.
Yeah, we want to have another public hearing, but they can reach out. Yeah. Okay, thanks. All right, well, congratulations applicants.
Thank you.
You can sign off if you want, or you can hang in there with us with our liaison reports.
Say goodnight, but thank you all very much. We appreciate all the time and effort put into this tonight.
Yeah. Okay, so that, that's the end of our public hearings. Now we're into our liaison reports. A couple of people aren't here, so I won't read those. Um, city council, that's my role. Um, I'll just say that, um, our commissioner Gordon Hansen has been appointed to the H R A. So that's why he's not here, I think. So, um, he was interested in both and, and they needed him over there. So that's where he is now. And, uh, Aaron Reese Daniels was reappointed or reconfirmed. Uh, H R A?
Um, at the last meeting, um, Community Development Director Pullman gave the, um, uh, year-end review, and if anyone wants a flavor for all of the great amazing work that the H R A and E D A is doing, I highly recommend listening to that, maybe five to eight-minute presentation. It was just, it warmed my heart to think of all of the great things that the city is doing to support, um, accessibility in terms of um, housing and business. And I mean, just stuff that you never think city has their, um, has the ability to impact. Um, they're showing every day that they're impacting people's lives in really cool ways. So, um, I can't be as eloquent as, uh, uh, Melissa was during that presentation, but it really was amazing to hear all of the great work. So strongly recommend anyone checking that out. In terms of actions, uh, the H R A approved a resolution in support of the deeply affordable housing on Portland Avenue, um, that uh, proposal from Beacon Interfaith Housing Collaborative that we heard a work session about. They supported that, and then they also approved the sale of sixty-six hundred, is that right, sixty-six hundred Logan Avenue South for, um, Habitat for Humanity Home.
Thank you. That was, that was great. Thanks, Commissioner Sturza. All right, Richfield School Board? Are you here? Is there a report from Richfield School Board? I can't remember who had that. No? Okay, thanks. Um, Transportation Commission, any report?
Yeah, uh, so since we last met in February, the Transportation Commission meeting that was scheduled for March second was canceled. So nothing new to report on there, but I'll keep an eye on their agenda and report whatever they need again.
Thanks, Commissioner Serma. Um, uh, let's see, Sustainability Commission?
Yes, thank you, Chair. At a regular meeting on February twenty-fourth, the Sustainability Commission discussed updates to their distribution of organics collection bags, the disposable bags. They discussed Earth Day plans. They discussed pro, um, proposed mailers for residents about energy efficiency and organics hauling. And they also discussed the possibility of a sustainability fair with the League of Women's Voters, women voters. Um, and finally, a few days ago on the fifteenth of March, they had a work session with Community Services to discuss the tree displaced, replacement plan in East Richfield. The city is removing about five hundred ash trees due to Emerald Ash Bore. And, um, they are discussing which trees to plant along the boulevard to replace them. And, uh, I, I learned that that program is all funded by grants from the D N R.
Thank you. Also really interesting. So that's the end of our liaison reports and leads us to City Planner's Report.
Sure, Chair Quam, I'll try to make it brief. Uh, as of April, we will be returning back to in-person meeting. So looking forward to seeing everybody here, um, in April. And, uh, we'll meet before that because we have quite a few work sessions coming up, uh, that I'll remind you all about. And, uh, we'll meet before that because we have quite a few work sessions coming up, uh, that I'll remind you all about, and the first one would be on April twelfth, uh, which is, uh, in regards to the hub design. And then there'll be one on April eighteenth on Missing Middle Housing and our continued work in that realm. And then, um, in April twenty-sixth, uh, there is a work session uh, on the Richfield Legion, Legion Housing Proposal. So quite a few upcoming work sessions, and then, um, I see one here at May tenth would be the one after that for, um, what we call the Mathwood Properties, uh, located on Seventy-Eighth Avenue, um, the southeast corner. Um, so quite a few work sessions coming up. Um, that's all that I have.
Thank you. Um, I can't remember, did we get an email with all the work sessions listed?
You, you did, but if you're not sure, I can, we can definitely resend you.
I don't remember getting a list, like, yeah, that would be awesome. Thank you. So in our next, um, regular planning commission meeting in Chambers will be, um, April twenty-fifth at seven P M. So we'll see you there. Uh, anything else? Okay. Alright, is there a motion to adjourn? Second? Alright, discussion? Uh, staff, would you take role?
Chair Quam?
Aye.
Commissioner Holbig Johnson?
Holbig Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Keneely?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza?
Aye.
Commissioner Sirma?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Good night.
Night, everyone.